Okay Theresa, you're live, thank you.
You're live, okay, thank you Marcus. Hello everyone, welcome to the May 4th 2021 Village Buchanan Board Meeting. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with Executive Order 202.1. If you would like to see the meeting live, please go to Facebook. And if you have any questions, you can call in with questions or comments at 914-737-1034. And if you could all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every person who has a right to All right, thank you everyone. We're gonna move right on to the approval of minutes, March 23rd, 2021. Does anyone have any additions, comments?
I have none.
All good here.
Okay, everyone good? Okay, on a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, yes. So, April 6th, 2021.
Theresa, you have to vote on the minutes then, because the two members are standing.
Yes, I approve, yes, thanks, yes. Thank you for reminding me, thank you. You need three votes, right Nick?
Yeah, at least 2.6 votes, yeah.
Okay, now moving along to the April 6th, 2021 organizational meeting, any comments, questions?
I have none.
No, all good.
Basically, okay, on a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item, comments from the floor, agenda items only. All right, so we're gonna move to old business. I'm gonna make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding the overlay district.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, this is something we've been working on for a while. We have it in the final form, I believe, this evening. Would anyone like to make any comments? Would, I saw our planner David Stolman, would you just like to do just a quick overview?
Sure, sure. This is a local law that you're entertaining, which would do two things. It would create a C1/C2 overlay district over the C2 district and most of the existing C1 districts from 9A out to the, into the circle. It would also rezone the easterly side of Route 9A between White Street and Blakely Circle to, from M1 to C2.
Blakely's not a circle, but Blakely Avenue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Blakely Avenue, thank you, thank you. From C, from M1 dash, M-1 to C-2, to make it the same as the opposite side of the street. The overlay district would provide some incentives for development in accordance with the design guidelines that were shipped into the village. And will provide for appropriate development at an appropriate density and will encourage development in the, in the district. That's essentially it.
Okay, thank you. Just for people who haven't been involved, you know, just to do that overview. So, do any of the board members have any comments?
Back on February 5th, the planning board submitted a review and comments on this proposed legislation. The planning board discussed it for two months, they came up with a final product. And it says, at the end of the comments, the planning board was unanimous on several things, but the last comment was, "The Village Buchanan Planning Board can recommend the adoption of the proposed overlay legislation if the stated concerns have been evaluated and properly addressed." So the question I have to the board members, do they have any questions on, or do you understand what the issues that the planning board had found with this overlay legislation?
Sean, would you?
I have, I have something, but I'd like to let other people go first.
Okay.
So Sean, since you were on the planning board, would you like to just review those concerns once again?
There were two concerns. There originally was several concerns, but those concerns were taken care of by the change in draft legislation that occurred in December. So, the first concern that the planning board had was, "The increase in traffic for high-density housing may cause people to make cut-throughs on local roads to avoid traffic during high-traffic hours. This currently occurs in the area of Premier Athletic Club. The special permit process currently addresses traffic and puts into place certain mitigating strategies such as the installation of traffic control devices, pedestrian pathways, or the reduction of the size of the proposed development. As of right development, eliminates these checks and balances. A governing authority cannot approve legislation that allows a certain density of development and then not approve said legislation that allows, or then not approve said legislation of that development based on the amount of traffic the project will create. A traffic study should be conducted to ensure that the maximum development proposed by this legislation will not overly burden this corridor. The traffic study conducted for development on a property located on 137 Lindsay Avenue should be evaluated. This study evaluated the impact of mixed-use development with entry and egress from Albany Post Road." So that was part, that was just the first part of the letter that I had sent as planning board chairman to the elected officials. And I was wondering if they have any comments or concerns, or how this could, these concerns could be addressed, or if you feel that they have been addressed based on the change in draft legislation?
My comment is that I had the same, same concerns even prior to hearing from the planning board. So, I don't, I don't really realistically see what could be done to resolve those concerns because the corridor itself is, is a, is a narrow, a narrow road. It doesn't lend itself to being wide, made wider in any particular case. And I would rather see development in, over, over in the, in the area over, by the nuclear power plants where people can leave the village by using the highway and Walts Boulevard rather than to have to clog the road on Albany Post Road. So...
Eric, can I address this, please?
Yes.
Absolutely, Dave. I'm sorry, I'm not the chair now.
The, the planning board's concerns are addressed in the attachment to the negative declaration, which we provided the village a while back. And traffic is being addressed in two different ways. As, as Sean knows, the, the residential only use is going to be a special permit use, which will have some control or provide some control over the traffic impact, as will the fact that we have the state environmental quality review process in, in position. And, and, and we use that when we review projects at the planning board level as well. So, the traffic impact will be addressed at that level as opposed to being very specific about its particular intersections at this level, at the village board level.
No, I appreciate that David, and that was one of the reasons why the planning board did vote to approve the draft legislation was because of the changes and because a special permit was in there. As you remember, you had attended the planning board meeting when we discussed this. And one of the reasons why we put that in there was to reinforce the requirement for a special permit and give the reasons why special permits should be used for higher density. So that, that's the reason why I was in there. And like I said, the last statement said, "As long as the village board understands the concern, and if they feel that it's addressed, or if they want to change it to allay some other fears." But I'm in agreement with you. It was incumbent upon me as chairman to include everybody's comments, and you know, we don't always agree with things, but these two comments that we had were universal and they were universally accepted by the members. If no other members have a question on the traffic, I'll go over the second one, that was the zoning request. Hopefully everybody has had a chance to review this document, it was submitted in February, and it should have been reviewed again in March, and then again in April. So, does anybody else from the board have a question on the traffic impact?
No, I'm comfortable with the traffic requirements with CEQA and the two things, because that does need to be addressed. So, but I'm comfortable with what David said, addressing that.
Okay, so the second issue was a zoning issue. All right, it's, as you know, the draft legislation allows the planning board to make approvals over zoning issues, which have been traditionally zoning board purview. Okay? So, the comment was, and this was also universally accepted by all the members, "Zoning issues should stay with the zoning board. Allowing planning board what amounts to variances for any reason circumvents the zoning process and the entire reason why we have a zoning board. Bypassing procedures and processes for expediency creates a possibility of making mistakes. It also grants some property owners rights and advantages over other property owners. There are over 20 properties in the affected zones that have gone through the current process successfully, and there is no reason to suggest that others could not equally be successful. We strongly suggest that this provision be removed." And that provision is currently in the, in the draft legislation, and if the village board feels that it is not taking or usurping the zoning board's purview, it's, it's fine. Like I said, the, the planning board said, "If you guys understand it, then you accept it, you may be opening up a Pandora's Door to changing other legislation that allows the planning board to make zoning changes." The planning board is not a zoning board, it has a totally different criteria, it has a totally different purpose, and I believe that's why it's segmented. The village board, any village is not required to have a planning board, it is required to have a zoning board by law. The village board can act as the planning board. So, I just wanted, you know, if you guys have any questions on it, I really don't, I guess you should be zoning board issues, you know?
I have a comment, sounds like a lot of mumbo jumbo to me.
Okay.
Because what we're doing is increasing the bulk regulations and basically giving the planning board, when they do a site plan review, the discretion to reduce it, for example, with a 75% light lot coverage as a maximum, which some of the older buildings in the village already have on the, you know, like around the circle. And, you know, if you, if you have a property that's, that's, where that's a maximum, the planning board, the zoning board's not reviewing every site. So to me, this all makes sense, because the planning board is the one that's gonna review the site in its totality, the traffic, the, the design of the building that's submitted, who's next door to it, you know, the impact on neighbors, the parking requirements, the landscaping, they're gonna look at the totality of it and say, "We can't give you that maximum, 75% here because, because it's gonna impact somebody next door too much," or something, you know? So, so to me, it makes perfect sense, it's basically increasing the bulk regulation, setting it as a maximum, and giving the planning board, when they do their review, which is the, the only total review, the zoning board doesn't do that, the zoning board just looks at one element, separate from all the other things, the planning board has to look at everything together, and so they can make that judgment call better than anybody else. We're just setting a maximum, for example, with that lot coverage.
Well Nick, you could extrapolate that to any zoning issue that is in front of the planning board, you know? You could say that for height, you could say that for lot lines, you could say that for coverage, you could say that for distance to the property owner. There are myriad of zoning issues that come up when you do a site plan for the planning board. So if you're gonna allow the planning board to do it for this area and this coverage, you should allow that for every area. And there again, it's, you know, so because if you're, if you're opening the door to a lot coverage and a frontage, you should be able to do that, not only for commercials, but you should be able to have that latitude for residuals. Okay? So, you're allowing property owners advantages over other property owners. And I think, you know, to be, to be consistent, you should have the same zoning requirements or following the zoning code for commercials, residuals, manufacturing, everything. You shouldn't, you shouldn't, okay, listen, that's why we could agree to disagree. I just wanted you guys to understand what the issues were.
Different zones have different, you know, allowances, use regulations, bulk regulations. And I don't agree that, I don't think that this is turning the planning board into an ad hoc zoning board.
Okay.
It's, it's just setting on a couple of criteria where, where, where allowing for more units or more lot coverage, when they do a total site plan review, and they're the only ones that do that, they're better equipped in those cases to make those judgments. That doesn't mean that they should come, they can't come in and, and change the bulk regulations in a residential zone, you know? It's, it's, I think it's a little bit different here, a lot different.
Well, as you know, there's only certain criteria to issue zoning variances. And one of that, one of those criteria is that the owner cannot use his property the way it's configured, or the way the zone dictates it to be used. So, you can't just give blanket zoning variances or variations of the zone without certain criteria being implied. So, in order to leave that in there, I would suggest that the requirements for issuance of variances, similar to lot coverage, which is part of this planning, this overlay, should be included in the purview of the planning board, so they can understand what the requirements are when they're going for what, what amounts to a variance at the planning board's discretion.
Well, it's not a variance, because we are setting the code to allow for a 75% lot coverage, it's not a variance. It's a variance, if somebody comes in and says they want 78% lot coverage, then they have to go to the zoning board.
Correct. It's fine, no problem.
You know, so there's no variances required. If a variance is required, you gotta go to the zoning board.
I understand.
Okay, so, you know, if somebody comes in and says, "I want to cover 80% of my lot", they go to the zoning board. You know, but right now, the lot coverage requirement is in the C1, C2 is, is it 50%? I, I don't remember offhand. It's more than the residential 30%, I think it's 50. Does anybody know?
Yeah, David said yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, this just gives the planning board a bit of latitude in this special overlay district.
It's just my duty to explain what the findings of the planning board were, that's all?
Yeah, and I think the planning board really looked at this, I think they made some good comments, I, you know? Can I talk about another?
There's, there's just one more point that, that I had on it, there was three points, I'm sorry, I misspoke when I said two.
Go ahead.
The, the third one was that the city of Peekskill, the town of Cortland, and the village of Croton should be contacted to determine how they use overlays and what problems they may have incurred with their use. If these municipalities do not use overlays, serious consideration should be given as to why and if overlays are the best course of action for the development in these zones. So I know Mr. Stolman had did some, some research, and I don't have, I don't have the email, I didn't keep the notes that we had when we spoke, Dave. So if you want to go over what you found in the city of Peekskill, town of Cortland, as well as the village of Croton.
I'd be happy to. In the city of Peekskill, there are no overlay districts. In the town of Cortland, there's one environmental overlay district. And in the village of Croton, there are four gateway overlay districts, which are sort of mixed residential and commercial. I spoke with the village engineer there who does the planning work as well, drawing a blank on his name, although I know him from years and years ago. Spoke to him, the village engineer, and he said the gateway overlay districts were working perfectly fine, they'd been there for a long time, and, and the village is fine with them.
Can you explain what the purpose of those overlays was, David?
Well, very similar to this, they provide incentives for the appropriate development of those areas with the design guidelines. So it's very similar to what we're doing here.
And there again, like you said, the city of Peekskill does not have any, and the town of Cortland has one environmental one. So, that's one of the reasons why the planning board had wanted to find out what our adjoining communities were doing, how they address these issues. And we found it kind of interesting that two municipalities hardly use them at all, and the one in the village of Croton was done around 20 to 30 years ago with no addition. So, you know, there, there may be a reason, there may be a correlation, maybe, I, I don't know. It just seems kind of odd to us that out of the entire population with hundreds of thousands, hundreds of square miles of property, there's only two examples we can find, and none younger than three decades.
May I, may I respond to that?
Sure, absolutely.
I know overlay is just one zoning tool. The same result can be achieved by rewriting your code completely, which is probably a more lengthy process. You know, so it's, it's just another, it's just another tool used to, to direct development in the way you would like, and to encourage development, in this case, and in many cases. You know, it's not the only way to achieve that end. And, and as you know, we'll be discussing later in this meeting, I think, getting a total code review, but that's a process that takes a year. This was meant to be a more, more expedient way to do things. And I don't know that we'll ever know if it was more expedient than redoing the whole code, but sometimes it doesn't feel like it. But it's just one way to do it, you know?
And the, the planning board had a lot of areas of agreement, I just wanted to go over the areas of agreement, because this draft legislation includes more than just, just these two things. "The planning board is not opposed to the following increases. An increase in lot coverage to 75%. However, such coverage must conform with New York State Stormwater Management Program. Setbacks as long as it is in line with adjacent structures. The building height. Reduction in lot size from 40,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet for residential development. The development guidelines similar to those presented have been used and will continue to be used by the planning board for site plan amendments and initial construction. New York State Smart Streets Design Guidelines should also be included in the design guidelines." And there was no opposition to changing the M1 zone on the north side of Albany Post Road to C1 and the C2 zone. So, we, we felt even if you guys had, even if the legislation was, everything was changed, these things should stay in there without being changed. Okay? That's all I have, that's all I have to say about it, you know, we've gone over it a lot, you guys know my, you guys know my position on it, and you know the planning board's position on it, you know, I'm open to any questions, I know Nick's position on it, so...
Sean, would you be willing to vote on this as is?
Absolutely. We can't keep, have the legislation sitting out there for 18 months, you know? You didn't say yes or no, you know? You take up so much time on the, the people's time during public hearings, discussing an hour, two hours at a time, it's either, it's gotta move. Yes, either yes or no, that's all.
Absolutely, I definitely agree with that.
It's taken time to get to this point, because there's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of additions, a lot of taken out, so it's been a give and take for a while. But if, if everyone feels that this has gotten to the final format, then I think at that point, we're ready to vote on it. It was only how many months ago that the planning board had put in their comments? So, yes, sometimes things take a little bit longer, but you know, you want to get it right so that you can move on.
Right, well, so if you, Madam May, if you don't mind, I, I think we definitely should vote tonight, but I do want to address something else related to this, if I can. I asked, last, at the last workshop, we discussed the tax ratable aspect of this, meaning how much tax do you get from different types of properties? And, you know, basically comparing residential to commercial and mixed use. So, we have a handful of properties around the village that I thought kind of fit into this category, into these different categories, and Marcus was kind enough to look these up and, and send me the information on what these current rate payer, what these taxpayers currently pay. So, for, I'd like to go through a few of these. Everyone knows the, the building where Dunkin' Donuts and, known as Pizza is, that building is, has four commercial units, and, and it, and it has four, I believe it's four apartments above. That unit, that property pays, is it okay for me to say what these people pay in a public meeting?
Public record.
Public record, okay. So that property is paying $10,653 a year in village tax. The apartment building on Bannon Avenue is paying $15,735. So we're getting $15,735 from the apartment building, we're getting $10,000 from that mixed-use building. But there's another mixed-use building on 9A that's paying, paying very close to what the Dunkin' Donuts Carbon building is paying. That building is just south of the hardware store, there's a mirror and glass place in there, and there are several apartments. I might be wrong, but I thought somebody told me there were seven apartments back in there. Does any, does anybody know that offhand?
No, but the, the Carbon building has more, more commercials than four, there's two downstairs and there's three upstairs, actually I think five or six.
There's a wine store in the back, and?
And there's a, there used to be a nail place, which then got switched over to a, to a glass room, but it is currently vacant, but it is a...
Right, okay. And upstairs is the pizza place, the Chinese place, and Dunkin' Donuts, which has like a double size. So, so there's maybe five businesses?
That's correct. You, you stay in your apartment, I just wanted to let you know this quarter for you.
And they're, and they're paying $10,600 a year compared to $15,000 for the apartment building on Bannon Avenue. Another, that mixed-use building south of the hardware store, which has a mirror and glass business, and, which has several apartments, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure of the number. I'm remembering that somebody told me seven, I might be wrong, but it's certainly four or five, we could always check it. Anyway, they're paying roughly the same as the Carbon building, which is, they're paying $10,450 a year in village taxes. Now, part of this overlay might facilitate townhouse building, and we do have a townhouse development on Catherine Street with their back facing up against Gallon Measure, there are five units there. And those five units pay anywhere from a little over $3,000 to about $5,500. They're all pretty similar, I'm not sure why they all pay more, maybe some of them did some improvements, so their taxes went up. But, but the five townhouses together, which are on roughly an acre of property, are paying $23,500 combined for the townhouses. The planning board did also comment in the, in the communication we got, they commented that we should keep the commercial in order to maintain the tax base, but, but I'm under the impression that that's a little misleading, because I think that from this, from what I'm, from this small section, the apartment building and the townhouses versus the two mixed-use developments, we're looking at two mixed-use developments paying roughly $10,500. We're looking at all residential, in the case of the apartment building, paying $15,700. In the case of the townhouses, five of them on a similar-sized property, $23,500. Marcus, you also said you had spoken to somebody that indicated that mixed-use was a higher tax ratable than all commercial. But it almost seems that the, you know, in some cases, all residential is gonna pay as much or more in taxes than properties.
That, that has never been disputed, Nick. What's been disputed is the amount of services provided for that. So you're talking about the Bannon Avenue apartments, which I, prior to the fire, they had around 24 or 25. After the fire, I think they were brought down to 18 or 19. Multi-family houses, multi-family residents, which you use a lot more services for a multi-family residence. Just think of all the extra garbage, the extra sewage, the, the use of recreation facilities, the schools. And when you're going from 19 units on Bannon Avenue to four residential units down at the Carbon building, you only have a $5,000 difference. I, I think you're kind of making the point that, that we've been talking about, that mixed commercial residential has a, a good tax benefit to the village versus high-density residential, because you provide so many services. I'm guaranteeing you that there are more services provided to the Bannon Avenue apartment building than the mixed-use of the Carbon building. I'll bet you anything on that. You know, you got four families versus nine... You know, you got four families versus nineteen families, you know? Just the amount of garbage and sewage alone. And there's the, there's people in the, in the, uh, in the schools. So townhouses are the way to go, that's fine. Townhouses are allowed under this legislation. But I think you just kinda proved our point that, you know, the, the tax benefit is, is a mixed use.
Well, um, you know, I'm not opposed to mixed use, but I think that, uh, that there is, that if we only, uh, if we, you know, only allow mixed use, uh, we're also not as likely to get some development because, um, you know, developers need some incentive too. And obviously they're gonna make more money on all residential. Uh, and there's more incentive because they know they could, they could sell or rent those apartments as opposed to, um, you know, right, right now, there's, it's hard to say. If you build something with four stores, you're gonna be able to rent them out.
No, absolutely, and, and you're, you're allowed to have total mixed use with a special permit and all of these criteria will be taken into account prior to the site plan being approved. You know, all the traffic that, that the Planning Board and Rich was talking about, you know, there, there's a lot of things that go into sole residential use. And that's why a special permit's important, so that you can discuss that, you know?
Yeah.
Well, the as of right, the, the as of right, we already, the draft legislation already doubles the current as of right from four units per acre to eight units per acre. So there was an incentive to, uh, increase the residential, but also to offset that lack in taxes per unit of residential is why you had fifty percent of the floor space to be used for commercial to help offset that. So you can make more money with the, with the residential and help the residents, the help of taxing municipality with commercial. It's kind of an offset. So you, you're giving some to the developer, you're allowing to go over to seventy-five percent lot coverage, you're allowing the height, building height to, so he doesn't have to get all these variances. You're allowing him to come closer to the road. There's a lot of things in there that will help the developer increase his commercial as well as increase his residential. So that's why it was important to include those things in the legislation.
Well, I, I, I wanted to make a com- uh, comment on the, uh, on the, uh, special use permit. Um, at first I, my, uh, you know, the hairs on my back went up. Uh, I know I have no hair on my head, but I do have hairs on my back. Um, and, um, uh, but, you know, after discussing this further, uh, with a variety, uh, uh, number of people, uh, I'm thinking that it's actually a good idea to have a special use permit for the larger properties. We have two large lots. One, uh, across from the, um, the high school, across from the church, and one just to the north side of the hardware store. Um, don't know what's gonna happen there. I believe on the car, the one owned by Carbon, I believe he's looking to do an apartment building. Um, and the current, the draft that we're gonna vote on tonight allows for up to twelve units per acre. And if somebody has a five-acre parcel, that sounds like a lot of apartments to me. And so I, I agree with, you know, with the special use permit in order to, to really look at it in its totality in terms of traffic, in terms of congestion, in terms of, is that number, the, the parking, will it fit? And, you know, the different aspects of it. Um, so I'm, I'm, I've come to agree with you on that special use permit. Except I would like it excluded from smaller townhouse developments, like somebody who wants to put, I, I'm gonna go with up to six. But after that, we'll go with the special use permit. But if it's six or fewer units, um, I, I, six or fewer units of all residential, my feeling is that the regular Planning Board process will be sufficient uh, to, to, you know, to look out for the interests of the, uh, village, the interests of the neighbors. Um, and, um, you know, that would be my suggestion to modify what we're currently voting on to make an exclusion for the special use permit for those smaller lots. And I'd be curious to poll the board and know how each board member feels about that. Because to me, the main thing is that this thing goes forward tonight. I, I, you know, I don't wanna keep insisting on, on the one point that I want and have this whole thing go down the tubes. So can we, I'd like to poll the board now to know, to see how you feel about what I just said regarding uh, an exclusion for special, for a special use permit for six units or less of residential. Should I, should I call on you all, or would you all like to just start?
So, can I ask you something, David? Since we have this already written up, the resolution, if the board agrees to this, how would we?
Sorry, is the board, I'm sorry?
If the board agrees, agrees to the change for the smaller properties that Nick just asked for, just, um, discussed, we already have the resolution written up.
Yes, I, I was actually thinking, I was wondering what Stephanie is thinking about this. And I would say that it'd be a whole lot safer and more defensible if you didn't change that tonight. Uh, it's not a, it's not an insignificant change, it's not an editorial change, it's a substantive change. And you can always make that change going forward, but I, I wouldn't do it tonight.
Okay.
Nick, uh, you are already allowed by this special use permit, six dwelling units down to a half acre. So you're, they're allowing six units on a half an acre. Right now, the units on Catherine Street, there's six on one acre and they look pretty good, you know? But we're already allowing it to go even lower.
Uh, no, townhouses is not, uh, is not twelve units per acre. Apartment, apartment building is twelve per acre. Townhouses, we went from five to six. We're allowing six per acre, which means on a half an acre, you prorate it and you're only allowed three.
This says multifamily, one and two-bedroom townhouse dwellings or two-family dwellings on parcels of land, not less than twenty thousand square feet, provided each dwelling unit contains a minimum of seven hundred and fifty square feet with a maximum of six units per acre. Prorated. Okay, I understand, yeah, I got you. My mistake. No, I made a mistake, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so on a, on a, all you would be allowing, if you look at that parcel by, with the townhouses next to Gallon Measure, is one more unit. That, they have five and it would be a six per acre instead of five. When, when you can't, there's just so much, because townhouses are built side by side. It's not a vertical development. And, um, um, you know, I was kinda questioning with townhouses, do they need to be excluded from the, from the, well, the increased height with, um, I mean, do you build townhouses three stories? Is that, is that a reality? They're generally two stories, aren't they?
Usually.
I really feel we're just sticking with what we have and we do it on a case-by-case basis. If an applicant comes to us with a concern with a plan like that, we, it would take them an extra sixty days and, you know, we can basically change the legislation for him at that time. We're only talking about a few parcels, you know, and, uh, I, I think, I think perfection is the enemy of progress here, you know?
Well, just let me, uh, put it to Stephanie, because I believe we've done this before. We've had resolutions and we vote on a resolution with a stated change to the text. I believe we have done that before. Stephanie, can you comment on it?
I, we have done that before. But in this particular instance, I, I agree with David. We have gone through this, we've, 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 uh, published it, we've talked about it, we've discussed it, and it feels like if you wanna make a change now, don't vote on it now. No, or do what Sean and David are suggesting and make your changes later. But this has been going on forever and this is what it's, you know, what we've done before, in my opinion, like the trailer law. We make these adjustments to these small words here and there. This is a, this is a big change, in my opinion.
All right, and this, this is why things take time, because we hash everything out. And I think, I think the board, unless another board member has any comments about this. Okay, because I'd like to open it up to, um, comments from the floor.
Yeah, go ahead and do that.
We're good, okay.
Yeah.
Cindy, let me know if there's anyone that has a comment from the floor.
And, and if anybody wanna raise their hand, I'll, I'll notify the mayor. So anybody wanna raise their hand, whatever, any comments, please?
No, no comments, Theresa.
All right, thanks, Cindy.
Theresa, no hands raised either.
Okay, so, on a motion to close the public hearing regarding the overlay district.
Take a motion to close the public hearing on the overlay district legislation.
All right, second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so under new business, I'm going to read the resolution for this. Village Buchanan Resolution Adopting Local Law Number Three of two thousand twenty-one, which would amend the, was the village zoning law by rezoning the easterly side of Albany Post Road from White Street to Blakely Avenue, from the M1 to the C2 zoning district and by creating and applying the C1, C2 overlay district to the modified C2 district to a portion of the C1 district. At a regular meeting of the Village Buchanan Board held on the fourth day of April two thousand twenty-one at seven thirty at the Municipal Building, two thirty-six, but we didn't have it. We're, it's being, Cindy's at the two thirty-six Tate Avenue, uh, site. But we're on, we're on, uh, we're on Zoom. Whereas the Village Board is considering the adoption of Local Law Number Three of two thousand twenty-one, which would amend the village zoning law by rezoning the easterly side of Albany Post Road from White Street to Blakely Avenue and repeating again from the M1 to the C2 zoning district and by creating and applying the C1, C2 overlay district to the modified C2 district into a portion of the C1 district, the proposed action. Whereas a public hearing on the proposed local law was duly advertised in the Journal News as required by law. And whereas a public hearing was opened on January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, was continued at multiple Village Board meetings and was closed on May fourth, two thousand twenty-one, during which time all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak about said proposed local law or any part thereof. Whereas the Village Board has determined that the proposed action is an action for which there are no other involved agencies and that the Village Board is therefore by default the lead agency for this action. And whereas the Village Board referred the proposed local law to the Village Planning Board for its advisory opinion. And whereas in response to, in response to said referral, the Village Planning Board responded with comments regarding the proposed local law. And whereas in accordance with Section two thirty-nine of the New York State General Municipal Law, the Village Board referred the proposed local law to the Westchester Counting Board for its advisory opinion. And whereas in response to said referral, the DCDPD responded with comments. And whereas the Village Board has given due consideration to the comments of the Village Planning Board and the WCPB, now therefore be resolved as follows. The Village Board hereby adopts and incorporates the recitations and statements set forth above as it will fully set forth and resolved herein. Pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act regulations, the Village Board hereby adopts the attached negative declaration for the reasons stated therein, thereby finding that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, that a draft environmental impact statement will not be required and that the secret process is complete. The Village Board, after due deliberation, finds that it is in the best interest of the village to adopt said local law. And the Village Board hereby adopts Local Law Number Three of two thousand twenty-one, a copy of which is attached hereto and made part of this resolution. Except, except that specifically modified by the amendment, amendments contained therein, the village code as originally adopted and amended from time to time thereafter is to remain in full force and effect. The village clerk is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting into the local law book for the Village Buchanan and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State of New York. Okay, so, on a motion to approve the local law number three, um, can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Much gusto.
Say no. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, okay, opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So three? Three, one, all right, thank you. So that has been passed.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you, David.
You bet, you bet.
Yes, David, thank you.
You're relaxed now, David, huh?
That was a fairly long gestation period.
Yes, it was, yes, it was.
And it wasn't even a big baby.
Mission accomplished.
Thank you all for that.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Onto the next one now, next meeting.
Yep.
All right, so, um, what I would like to do, if it's okay with the board, we do have guests with us here this evening. Would it, would it, uh, be a problem if we put, um, Eric Block and Pat Leach from the Cortland National Little League ahead of this so that they don't have to follow through the whole meeting?
Sure, so that would be, it'd be changing the agenda.
So, yeah, number F. Number F would be moved to B.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so are they, there's Eric, where is?
I don't know if he's here, I'm not sure.
Is Pat here?
I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm on my phone, cause my Zoom workload on my computer right now.
Participants, I do not see Pat.
No, Pat is not on.
Okay, are you expecting Pat this evening, Eric, or?
Excuse me?
Are you expecting Pat this evening?
Um, I, I thought he wanted to come, but maybe something came up, I don't know.
All right, so would you mind waiting a few more, a few minutes more?
I think we could discuss it, you know, I, I.
That's fine.
I've talked to members of the Little League and I know Eric is, is well versed in it.
It's up to you, Eric. I'll leave it up to Eric, Eric, would you like to?
Yeah, well, I'm buying it to, to.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So anyhow, so, um, this is in reference to the use of the Westchester Avenue Field by the travel team and Hendrick Hudson High School is gonna also asking to really, to use it and related fees and insurance. So, um, Eric, you, I know you're, you're part of this travel team. Um, and I know, I, I know I met you at the field too. So explain to us the, the travel team, because we were trying to evolve tonight. So the travel team is different from the Little Leaguers or?
Um, I mean, a lot of them do play Cortland, have played Cortland National Little League. So a lot of the same children, they just, they just, they're, they don't, they don't only play on C N L leagues, they play in other towns as well. It's travel.
Yeah, they're all the same age?
My team is thirteen U, so it's like, it's a mix of twelve and thirteen-year-olds.
But Little League is, uh, lower age, is that correct?
Little League runs to, yes, some, yeah, twelve years old.
Okay, thank you.
But there are a couple of kids on my team that do play Little League because they're of age.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right, so, um, if you don't mind, you want me to start?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So I would like to thank you, uh, Mary Nickerbocker and the rest of the Village Board for, um, allowing me to speak tonight. Um, you know, I've been a, a member of the Cortland National Little League Board and I've actually been a coach for around six years, both in Little League and in travel. Um, personally, I've been a village resident for almost fourteen years now. Um, all three of my kids were born and raised in Buchanan. Um, we started off in Lindsay Ave and then we moved to Gallagher. Um, I mean, to, to get to the crux of the issue, you know, we pay a fee, a fifth, every team pays the fee. There's four teams currently using it. The thirteen U team, the fourteen U team, uh, team called Cortland United, and then a, um, there's actually a junior, senior Little League team, it's Cortland National, it's like a, it's like a Little League division for older kids. So there you use, there's four teams using the field. So each team is paying a fifty dollar per game fee and a, and a twenty-five dollar per practice fee. Um, for the spring, we've already paid that. We paid, um, we wrote a check to the Village Buchanan and we've already paid those fees. Um, we feel that, um, collectively, we feel that the fee is much too steep um, for the services we get and, and just, you know, for our families in general. You know, we pay a per game fee, however, the field is really just prepped one time a week, oftentimes for up to five to six games per week. Um, so we're not even getting a per game prep of the fields. Um, you know, an example is I, I had a game, uh, reschedule game for this Thursday and I asked for the, the field to be prepped on Thursday, possible? And, and the response is kinda like, we will try if we can get to it. You know, you know, that's tough when you've paid fifty dollars per game.
Um, excuse me, can I just ask a question for information? Uh, when you say prep, could you explain that so everybody was watching what that means?
Yeah, like the, the, the field is, like the, the infield is, is dragged and or raked. Um, the lines and the infield, the chalk is done. And then the outfield is spray painted the lines. And then, um, you know, the home plate area, those lines are done as well and the mound is, is repaired. And plus, if there's a little water, you know, sometimes like in Little League, we'd like to take the broom and sweep the water off, you know, depending on how much is there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I actually mentioned cutting the grass.
Can I ask a quick, can I ask a quick question also? Is it only for games or you also be using the field for practice?
We do use the field for practice, we do.
Do you need all the striping? You don't need that for practice, do you?
I would say the striping is not as, no, it's not, it's not needed for practice.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we hope the field's in good shape, which usually it's usually in fairly good shape, but you know, it's not like it's not in game shape for practice.
Right.
You know, and we've asked around other localities, and I think in my in my email I listed them, and I knew some offhand like Austin, Croton, Cortland, Yorktown, they don't, they're not charging their local teams for use of their local fields, and I see it seems like we we are maybe, I I don't I don't want to put a number on it, maybe we're one of the only locals that do that. You know, we would just like to see the fee reduced if possible. And also, one more thing I would like to mention is that there is something I spoke to Mayor Nickerbocker about is there's a safety issue, the gates down there are locked. So if there is an injury and there needs to be an ambulance in the field, the ambulance cannot get into the fields. That's a very big concern.
Bob, is there any way we can get them a key just to open the gate if there's there's an emergency to get them in?
Well, the police have the keys to all gates. And the 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 way that goes out there is actually unkind property, that's why we put that things, we had something problems back there, so that's why that gate was put there. So it's up to the board's pleasure what they want to do, but. You know, that was addressed, I thought that the police had the gates and there was an emergency, the police are the first guys there. If you want me to unlock them, I will give you the keys.
And Bob made a good point in the past, I'm not saying this is the people who did in the past, but then people parked their cars back there and that's all kind of innocent property, so that's another concern as well.
I mean, could we put a no parking sign? I don't know, we could we could try to regulate that.
They've been using that, you know, to park before this, to go in, you know, for people to park, because sometimes they have equipment to carry in too. So, you know, during the game, honestly, I I don't think it's a problem if if either Eric or Pat has a key to be able to access that. But that it has to be locked, you know, it it has to be locked when you leave, because like Wheel said, we we have had issues.
Right.
We're talking about the gate at the back of.
The first gate, there's another gate now, yeah, before the sand, before the.
It should be open when the when the kids are using the field for emergency purposes, that gate should be open.
Well, we could treat it the same way we treated the pavilion, we opened up the gate in the morning and then at dusk the police department would lock it. So we could use it the same as if, you know, I don't know if the pavilion is open now, as we had always wanted the recreation in there. I know years ago we unlocked it and then the police would lock it at night, we could treat that gate the same way.
Yeah, because the police do lock the gate over at Lenz Cove too, at dusk.
Yeah, so you could treat all the gates all the same, if the police department doesn't have an issue with.
You know, and I'll tell you, this this past weekend on Sunday, we had a collision in the outfield and one of my players was not moving and I, he just ended up having like bloody lip with spitting blood, he was fine. But when I was running out there, I was worried that he was knocked out, you know, and I'm looking at the gate and it's locked, and I'm like, oh no, how are we, you know, how are we going to do this?
Okay.
Big things happen, I did the whole baseball thing with my son for ten years and, you know, I saw a few nasty accidents in the course of that time, it doesn't happen often, but the, you know, but you need to be prepared for it.
Right, and and, well, thank you, thanks for recognizing that, and and, you know, Pat and I, and we, I spoke to Mayor Nickerbocker about this, you know, we're we're amenable to paying a fee, but we thought the fifty dollar per game fee and the twenty five dollar per practice fee was too steep. And what I think I outlined in my email was maybe two hundred dollars per team. We thought would be definitely a more fair price for, you know, what we're getting over there.
You mean for the season?
The season.
You know, years ago, we had always had a resolution, I had spoken to Marcus and I spoke to Nancy about this, on how resolutions are passed for use of the village fields, pavilions, Lenz Cove, and there didn't seem to be a cohesive policy, come to find out that I don't think the board had ever passed a resolution to allow the Little League to use that field. And correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, that's what you had told me when I spoke to you. So in the years past, when the soccer teams, when the football teams, and even when the baseball teams wanted to use those fields, we did it through resolution, we verified their insurance, and then we gave them the use of that field for free, because we had always felt that having our youth, especially fourteen and below, having them in supervised activities that were affordable to our community members was a better way to try and bring them up than have to worry at fifteen and sixteen, taking care of some adjudication, whether now they're doing vandalism and stuff, and we had those issues also. So I had never known that we were charging the baseball teams for practices, you know, we're talking about little kids, they're not going to use up the field as much as the high school would use it up. So, you know, we don't have a fee schedule, as far as I know, within the code for the use of our of our facilities, I know there is a scheduled fee for the pavilion, but I think we should be allowing these organizations who are willing to help mentor our youth, to help be responsible with our with our assets that we have, and give a little bit back to the community and say, hey, you guys can go run around a diamond for free today, you know? So I think it's a little onerous for volunteer organizations who are trying to do things as volunteers and for kids, to have to make them pay this amount of money, you know? I know the guys, the fields are going to be plowed and mowed anyway, whether there's a baseball team on it or not. When I was involved with the Little League, we prepped the fields, each team prepped the field before we went out there, there was a locker where we had the rakes, we had, we were able to paint the lines on there, we didn't require the town or require the village to come out there and do it for us, the coaches took care of that in before the games, and it gave them a little more responsibility for the guy beforehand, you know, if the guy beforehand didn't take care of it, the coach afterwards would go and tell him, why didn't you do this, I had to wait ten minutes, now everybody's backlog. So these guys have ownership now, because they have to be responsible for their peers to make sure that things are taken care of. If you're going to transfer that responsibility to somebody else, everybody's going to be staring at each other and complaining, why didn't this guy do this, this is what we paid for. So I think these leagues and these coaches are responsible enough to maintain their facilities, because they're the ones that are benefiting from it. I know there was some comments last month when I brought it up, was that we had to put a lot of money into these fields and we wanted to help keep keep them up, you know, we're talking about a three inning game with thirteen year olds or a six inning game with twelve year olds, you know, it's not that big of an impact, they're not going out there breaking the benches, they're not cutting down the backstops, you know, you're talking about raking a field, you know, so that's my opinion, I think there should have been a resolution to verify it, I believe the 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 insurance rates that our insurance company suggested to us, I thought they were high, quarter million dollar liability, those were just recommendations, I think we should go back to the requirement that we had in the past of twenty five thousand dollars that have the leagues and their coaches and their parents, which we already signed waivers when our kids play, to assign the waivers for these types of liabilities to help insulate the village. Because I know the rates that Marcus had given us were from two thousand seventeen, they weren't that much of an increase, but when you multiply that over multiple, multiple kids, it is a larger increase. So that that's my take on it, you know, we've done it in the past, we we did it, like I said, for football, we did it for baseball, we did it for soccer, I don't see why we shouldn't be continuing the policy.
Sean, when was the last time that you used that field? Because it was about three years ago when the board decided to upgrade that field and it was about thirteen.
We had used that when my youngest son was playing and that was, actually my oldest son, and that was prior to the improvements.
Okay, because that field was, has been in bad shape and was unusable for quite a while, for quite a while.
There were, there were games on it when, I love to say, five or six years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Bob can, Bob's here, Bob, you know, Bob is our, Bob Wheeler is our highway foreman, Bob, you know, you're the one that deals with the fields and everything, do you have any comments on this?
And I have to say, Bob's been very helpful.
Yeah, good.
So I do appreciate his his work.
All right.
Oh, well, I've played ball my whole life, you know, I understand their dilemma or their concerns, it is a lot more work under than usual, like this week will be a very tough week with all this rain coming to prepare our field to get ready for these games. So just to clear something up, whether I heard it wrong or not, when Eric said that, the comment was, I would see if we can get to it, the reason we couldn't get to it is because it was a rainy day. And certain days you can't get in that field until the field is dry and it's all mud. So we get to it when we line the field and they need to get lined as long as the field's available. So as far as what the board wants to do here, that's their decision, as far as the gates are locked, I'll do whatever you guys would like to do. The only thing I would say is as far as lining the fields, that may be a conversation we may have to have with some other people about that, because I do know that most other leagues or travel teams and most of the communities, they do require that their men, the employees do the lines. So that's that's a discussion you would have to have with other individuals besides it myself.
Can I comment? I think that from my experience, you know, I spent a lot of years with the baseball thing, you know, from from the time my son was five until he finished high school, so was that twelve years? And I saw a lot of coaches, and I coached and assistant coached and did the whole bit. And there were some coaches that were really meticulous and they'd be out there the day before the game and the morning of a game, and they would work on the field and they'd, you know, but 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 generally, people are going to rake and do things in such a way that the field, you know, you're going to start to build up a lip at the infield. And the field would definitely, you know. Be more reliably maintained, I think, by the highway department. I don't know that it matters who does the striping, but that's a union contract, is that a union contract, Bob? Is that a union thing where we have to, where they cannot do their striping?
That's been a practice that we were around, and I believe that might be the stance of the union.
Yeah, well, okay, because you can't mess up the field by putting a crooked line, it washes off in the next rainstorm. But depending on how you treat the infield, the raking, and, you know, how you treat the transition from from the clay to the grass, could make for dangerous lump where you get bad bounces, you know? And Eric, you probably know what I'm talking about, you might be the guy that 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 takes care of that field like it was your own backyard, but there's a lot of other people that just sort of.
You're right, no, you're right, and you know, so. Oh, I'm not in verse, having a highway to work on the field, I'm not.
Okay, so here's.
These are hot.
Here's what it gets down, here's what it gets down to to me, we got two choices here, either, I mean, we should not be making any money on this, either we calculate what it costs us to maintain the field and make the decision that we reduce the fees to the smallest amount just to cover our expenses, we should not be making any money here, or we take on, take, as Sean was saying, let's support these activities and absorb the expenses. So do we absorb the expenses? I'm not sure, I don't know how much expense we're talking about, we certainly look at budget a little bit differently the last couple of years than we have historically, because we've lost a lot of, you know, tax revenue, but but I would, I would, you know, in my heart, I would like to say, let's absorb this cost. Do we have an idea of what this cost is, Marcus?
I think I think Bob has the, a cost, do you have the cost on anything, Bob? Just so we have the whole before we vote. Kind of cutting in and out, Bob.
Yeah, Bob, sorry, we can't quite understand.
You can't hear me?
No.
Well, I think you were a little better just now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you, we heard a few words, but your mouth didn't move.
Am I better now?
You're doing a ventriloquist thing there.
I have a comment to make.
Sure, absolutely.
A little delayed.
How many fields do you maintain in the village?
Just that field, we used to have two fields, but the Town of Cortland League does not, we have two fields, but the Town of Cortland Field, we don't use that field over at Lenz Cove anymore, there's no need for it, plus, as we were going along, we found out that Entergy owns half of that field over at Lenz Cove. So the only field that we're maintaining right now is the field behind the highway department.
So the grass will be will be cut weekly? And Eric, do you have the capacity to to take care of the field or you don't?
Me personally, right now, not by myself, no.
I think Anthony means the organization has the capacity.
Or, yeah, not not you, not you personally. No, I don't want that, you know, I don't want to answer, but we do for other fields, you know, we do line the fields.
I mean, I coached for ten years in Little League and I'm very familiar with with maintaining the fields, I just want to know if you and and thirteen U to thirteen U, even CNLL, do they have the means and the capacity to to maintain it themselves?
I mean, we we may have to get some new equipment to to store over there, if if that was a decision.
You need Bob or you don't need Bob is the question I'm asking you.
Good question. Honestly, I think right now, for this moment, I'm not adverse to using the highway department, I'm not, I think they do, when they do it, they do it, they do a nice job, you know, but I I do think if, like I said before, if we're getting a a per game fee. That's kind of steep, when we're not getting a per game service, you know what I'm saying?
I'm with you, I'm with you on this, I I'm with Nick and Sean, I think we absorb this cost, I think this is, it's actually kind of ridiculous, I feel that this cost should be absorbed by the by the village, I mean, the Town of Cortland does it, Croton does it, every community, surrounding community does it. I feel like this is, this is only a benefit for the kids in the community, and these guys are all volunteers, that's the point. And I think it only helps helps out our community in in a great way, there's not much going on for these kids these days and this is, this is a great thing. Now, part of this discussion is not only the Little League, but it's also the high school. I really believe that we should treat the high school a little bit different than we do the volunteer organizations, because there's a lot of kids that are outside of our community, they're bigger kids, they have more impact on on the services, on the on the fields, and the school district is a lot bigger than than the Cortland Little League. So I I know on the agenda it says to discuss it with the travel teams and the high school, so I want to make sure that the policy that we set for the Little League does not automatically transfer over to the high school, because I believe that would have separate impact and separate impact to our to our community and is used by a lot more residents from the outside of the Village Buchanan.
And then Bob also, I'm sorry, Sean, Bob, also, I know you had said to me that for the clay, so, you know, you have to make sure that the expenses for the high school include the clay, because I I think you had mentioned to me, it's like seventy eight hundred dollars a year that you could potentially spend on clay.
I never said anything about clay.
No, no, I'm talking to Bob, I'm sorry, I'm talking to Bob, yeah, because I had asked Bob, you know, what are what are the different expenses and, you know, how much clay do they use a year and?
We typically go through, you know, every other year, so order about thirty yards of clay we use to keep the field up, which is cost about eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Because we have to add that when we get when we get to bed, whether we get and when they're trying to get games in and water's being moved around, when you move the water around, you're moving the clay with it and when you're having bigger, bigger issues with puddles in the field and that's where we have our problems. And Nick said before, we have our problems with the lips, and we try to, you know, everyone wants to get their games in, you're playing, you know, it's always been an issue, even softball down Lenz Cove, everyone's, you know, pressing, getting the games in and you're doing, if you can't do it, but you start just moving the clay all over the field, some end up in the lips, some end up in the.
Can't hear you, Bob.
I can kind of catch almost every other word, I'm sorry, Bob, yeah, you have a bad connection.
In the middle of the season when they're playing.
He doesn't hear either, yeah, he doesn't. He doesn't hear us.
Up the snuff because of that, because as soon as it's going to rain down, they're playing and practicing the next day.
Okay, thanks, Bob, we're still having a difficult time hearing you.
So, but see, Bob has to have the right to tell them they can't play there that day, if the field is muddy from a rain, it's going to get destroyed if people play. So, you know, we need to be able to say, when the field is not, when the field is muddy, we need to be able to say, you can't use it today.
I think the Little League already makes that call anyway, I mean, they're responsible for the safety of the children, so they're going to be responsible for dismissing the the play, I mean, it's it's pretty much their call, I mean, I know they're there for the kids and for their safety.
I think Bob, I think Bob has, on occasion, if it's a Saturday morning, gone down there to check to see if the field is okay, and then if it's not, you know, he he tells them it's not safe.
That's what the coaches do too, because the clay gets very slippery and they don't want their kids out there also.
Sure, yeah.
And I I do, I do believe with the scheduling.
And I, I do, I do believe with the scheduling, I believe that the Little League should supersede the high school scheduling. The high school has a lot more kids, a lot more games, a lot more practices. I believe that the, the volunteer organizations should have precedence over scheduling.
I think they already do, Sean. I think the high school came in after and asked for times to use it. But the, and this isn't Little, this isn't the Little Guys. So this is the travel teams that we're talking about with, who, with Eric is with. So, but they're under the CN, CNLL underneath that.
I believe they're all under the age of 14. They're not high school. I don't believe they're in high school yet.
As far as the high school team, the, the only team that I know that wants to use it is the JV team, JV men's baseball, just to practice only.
Marcus, is that true? My understanding was there were, there were games.
No, no, they have, they have games on Fridays and Saturday, they have games on Fridays and practices during the week as well.
Well, they're, from what I was told by Mr. Baker today, is that the, they, they, they don't, they play all their games at Sunset Field. Is that not true?
Their schedule had games. I guess same to schedule, but they had a number of games during, during their season.
They did, okay.
Yeah, Bob, Bob, you're cutting in and out. You got to get closer to your router, Bob, because you keep on cutting out.
I'm right on top of my router now.
Yeah.
Modified plays do, paying games.
Oh, modified, playing there.
JV wants us to use the user practice.
You know, I just want to note, you know, I know I've said it again and again, but if you guys investigate this and you, and, you know, you come to find that the, it is a rather large fee for the clay and what, you know, what other expense, I don't know. We're not adverse to paying something, okay? That's, that's a point I want to make. It's just that we felt the fee was way too high right now. Okay?
Okay.
I was trying to make that clear.
And I think, you know, I think this board, I think it would be appropriate for everyone to give a donation to the Cortland, Cortland National Little League. And Eric, I don't know if you want to take a minute to talk about your fundraiser this, for Mother's Day. Let's see if the board members can get involved in that.
Um, I know, it's, it's a, it's a bagel. Sorry, my son's freaking out about taking a bath now. Wait, hold on.
That's okay. So I'll explain it real quick. The, the Little League is having a fundraiser for Mother's Day and you can go online, you can sign up and they will deliver a dozen bagels. Or you can pick them up at Sebo Field. And it's 35 at the field to pick them up and, and flowers, and flowers are included. Or, so I figured, you know, put that plug in, Eric, let's see if we can get some funds raised for the, the Little League. So...
Yeah, I mean, we, we did it last year. It's, it is a great fundraiser. I know a lot of the mothers really appreciated it.
Nice. Good. All right. So we've talked about, we've talked about these two. We've also talked about the high school. So let's keep it separate. So what is the board's pleasure with the fee for the, for the, the travel teams and Hendrick Hudson High School? I've heard from Sean, I've heard from Cap, Anthony Capicotti, Nick seems to be good with that. I'm fine with it. You know, it'll be an expense that the village absorbs. And I've said to Eric several times, I want to see these kids playing on that field. We spent a lot of money and we didn't spend all that money to have that fit, that field sit there idle.
I just have a question because I'm getting a little bit confused. When we talk about the fee, is that separate from the thing we were talking about with the insurance or is it's part of...
It is separate.
Going to be another discussion.
That's another discussion.
Yes. So let's discuss the insurance now while we're on this.
Right. I, I, I agree with everybody about, you know, we, you know, we want to spend the money for the good of the people. And I think that's a very good cause for, sports is great for the kids and whatever we can afford, we, we can afford. I'm all for it.
There's just one question I have, you know. I, I don't like taking down fences until I know why they were built. So where, how did this fee originate? Where'd it come from? And how did it get instituted without a resolution?
It was a recommendation to cover the cost, Sean. And that was, goes back, I don't remember when that was all done, honestly, but we...
Didn't, did, did we set a fee after the ball field was, was renovated?
Yes, after the ball field was done.
I don't remember. Did we do it by, did we do it by resolution or was it just, I don't remember the details.
I don't remember. That's a couple of years ago.
I certainly, I don't remember.
Okay, so that's the past. We're moving to the future. We're changing this now. I, I assume, I'm hearing that we're changing this. So going forward, I guess we're going to have to do a resolution because Eric has said they have paid for the spring season. So going for the summer and the fall season, we will change the policy on that.
Yeah. I, I recommend that we track our expenses for the, for the, for the, for the rest of the year. And, you know, I don't think we, and then we, you know, if, when we look at that at the end of the year, we can then say, okay, maybe we'll go with a reduced fee or, but for now, let's absorb it and, and track our expenses and review it again before the next year's season comes around.
Good idea, Nick.
Okay. So Eric, talk to us about the insurance. What, what seems to be going on with the insurance?
I don't have a lot of detail about the insurance. From what I, I, I know that our insurance company is just, is just writing up the details. From what I've heard, it's moving along. I think insurance is pretty much done. But I'm not, I wasn't, I am not the person working on the insurance.
Okay, well, I understand what happened with the insurance. When we, when we got the new insurance company, the new insurance company set recommended rates for all of the use of our facilities. The previous rate was a $25,000 liability. They had recommended in their prospectus that we increase that liability from 25,000 to $250,000. In their memo, they had previously stated that they felt that it better insulated the village from future loss runs. With the increase in liability insurance, you have an increase in per user rate. So for every person who had enrolled on the travel team, there was an increase in the cost. Now, the, the teams that traveled to us still had the same rates. So there was, there was an issue with that. The insurance company in the memo that Marcus gave me, correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, but they had recommended that if we did not adopt the quarter million dollar liability policy, that they put into place a mitigating circumstance where they could, the, the, the users of our facilities could sign waivers to help further insulate us. So is that, is that my, is my understanding correct for the waivers and the mitigation of the increased liability insurance?
Okay, I'm not, like I said, I'm not an insurance expert.
It's RJ Pistato.
We got RJ here, the insurance broker on here.
Yes. Good afternoon.
Thank you. If you could explain for us. Thank you. I appreciate you being on.
Sure. Sure. So briefly, my name is RJ Pistato. I'm the insurance broker for the Village of Buchanan. We're not the insurance company. It's important because we represent you, not the insurance company. So part of my job is to keep the Village of Buchanan's insurance premiums low, year after year. And the way to do that is to help insulate the village. So less claims on the village's loss runs means the insurance company is more profitable and I can keep the premiums lower. So when the village came to me and Mark, Mark Soriano came to me and said, listen, there's a travel team that would like to use the village fields. How can we do this safely that we can insulate the village as best as possible? In my opinion, the more insurance, more protection that the, the league has, that if there is an incident or a claim, the less would go on the village's insurance history. And an insurance claim lasts five years on an insurance history. So if something happened, I don't know, this summer, someone got hit with a bat, an umpire or that will stay on the village's history for five years and will affect your premium for five years. So my suggestion, recommendation, which again, I report to the village board. So you can take some or none of my suggestions certainly, you know. But so my thought was the, and I, I know one of the trustees was talking about the limit. I don't specialize in insuring softball or baseball teams. It's not my area. I insure municipalities throughout Westchester. But one of the important coverages would be, it's called excess medical insurance and it's part of it, would be if a player, an umpire or a coach got injured on the village field. It would pay for the medical insurance for that injury. That's important because sometimes people sue if they don't have enough money to pay for medical costs. So that's where I thought it was an important part. Again, I'm not a specialist in this area, but the first one or two websites I went to for excess medical insurance and also general liability cost about $6 a player for the whole year. And that would provide general liability insurance for the player. Would give the village additional insured status and also $250,000 of the player and/or coach and/or umpire, a quarter million dollars of medical insurance in case they got injured on the village field. And that was about $6.25. Again, it's the first one I went to. You may be able to get it down to $4 a player, $4.50. Again, it's, I'm not an expert in that area and I'm certainly not one to spend anyone's money. I think it's a good investment for the village's protection. But that's one of my, that's one of my key recommendations.
It would be even a better investment if we had it at 2.5 million, right? The higher you go, the more insulated you are. So...
Yeah, and the answer is yes to that. But it's, it's, in my opinion, I've been doing it for a fair number of years. It's within reason. You know, you try and match the exposure to what the proper limit should be. So I get inquiries from Marcus all the time, you know, someone who wants to use the pavilion for a birthday party for, I don't know, a couple of hours. So do we need $2 million for a birthday party? Probably not. Do we need proper coverage for, you know, children with aluminum bats, baseballs? Yeah, I think that's more of a risk than a birthday party.
So it's your interpretation that if a circumstance beyond the village's control occurred on village property, the village would be liable?
Yes, yes. I'm not a lawyer, but certainly they'd be brought into the lawsuit because the village has the deep pockets. So there's coaches who are volunteers. You have, right? You liked that one, didn't you?
Not really.
Yeah, yeah. So you have, you have coaches, right? You have umpires and you have players. So if any of those got injured, who has the most money? The village does.
But they would have to, during litigation, they would have to show cause that the village was negligent in some way. And if we don't provide a safe environment, absolutely. If we got holes in the outfield, yeah. If we got a damaged fence, yeah. If we got a, a issue with the backstop or a bench, yeah, we are liable. But if somebody gets hit in the face with a baseball, we're not liable. So why do we got to have a quarter million dollars insurance?
Who provides the, who provides the bases? Is it the Village of Buchanan that has those bases? That, that's a question because that could be an issue where people get hurt. Or is it the Little League that provides those bases?
I think the village provided them. They were, they were in the, in the container.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure. The, the container that's on the field there? Where's Bob Wheeler? Bob, whose bases are they? The bases, whose bases are they? Are they the Little Leagues or are they the Village of Buchanan's bases?
This is the Courtland Little League and they are the town's bases. How are you? Sorry for being late.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. That's fine.
And to kind of go back to the insurance for a moment, that, yes, that we were budgeting $10 to $11 per player base. And I believe RJ, that we went through and we addressed all your concerns doing the back and forth, the policies and the price per player wound up going up to about $20 per player for the spring season based on us having two teams from our league playing there. And the cost is per season. So it would be spring, summer and fall separately. It would be that same cost again.
Okay. Yeah, the, the cost of, again, it's not my specialty. The, the first one I went to was $6.25. So I don't know, you know, which insurance company went to or how it ballooned from $6 to 20, but I'm sure there's a rationale for it.
Sure.
The one other thing I can add, I'm sorry, the one other thing I can add is in my 21 years of insuring municipalities, there's times that people sue when there's no negligence on the village municipality's part. None. But the, the cost to defend that lawsuit when a child is injured goes on forever. So I'll give you a quick case.
They can sue. There's no rhyme or reason.
Yeah, yeah. So 15 years ago, Village of Amerinick, there was a charity softball game. Adults were playing. A woman hit the ball, was trying to get to second base, broke her leg. It was, there's nothing that the village did wrong. That week, they got sued. Village of Amerinick said, what did we do wrong? In the lawsuit, turns out that the woman was out of a job, had no health insurance. Her attorney said, the only way you can go ahead and recover your medical cost is to sue the village. So I, I guess I'm jaded by the 20 plus years of doing municipalities, but lawyers will find creative ways to sue.
So what is the bottom line that we need to charge to protect the Village of Buchanan?
To charge? I don't know about the, to answer your question, the, there's nothing that, what we're trying to do is have the, in my opinion, the, have the, the leagues, the, the league provide the right insurance that we would see on a certificate. So they know if there was an accident, it would not affect the village's insurance. It would be covered by the insurance of the league.
So the insurance that Cortland Little League certainly had, currently has in place with you right now, that complies, correct?
I have not seen the most recent certificate, but if the answer was it complied with my April 13th email, the answer is yes.
So as of April 13th, that we provided the insurance that the Town of Buchanan has requested and we are fine doing so. Granted, if it's, so if it's $6.50, $10 or $20, we're fine providing.
Yeah, as long as it complies with the email of April 13th.
It, it did, RJ. They provided it and, and you actually, I know we're going back and forth with our emails. They do comply now.
Good, good. And, and again, I report to the board. So if the board doesn't like suggestions two and three, but likes suggestions four, terrific. It's, I'm not the insurance company. So quite frankly, it's, you can say no to all of my recommendations.
And when you say comply...
There's no more issue with the, the insurance. Is that what you're saying? Is everybody agreed with the insurance now?
The assurance, the assurance is being covered. The question is, is, is the insurance cost of the Little League too high that the board wants to reduce coverage? That's the question.
The, the original, the original coverage was $25,000. When we switched insurance companies, the recommendation was to adopt a quarter million dollar policy and we passed that cost on to the Little League. What we're saying is, was that was a recommendation. It wasn't a requirement.
Correct.
Village adopted the recommendations. So previous, our previous insurance was 25,000 and he wanted a quarter of a million. And as Mr. Imparsato says, you know, it's to further insulate the village. We can further insulate the village by requiring 25 million, you know. But it's, it's a cost benefit analysis. You know, I don't think the Little League has sued anybody. You know, I stood right next to a kid when he got his head split open. You know, nobody sued. So I know we can defend against slip and falls every place. You know, somebody could trip over sidewalk and sue us. You know, we're not going to require people who use our sidewalks to have $10,000 insurance. So it's a cost benefit analysis. I don't believe the cost benefit is, is in our favor. I think the Little League, they, we, they already signed the waivers for, for injuries. As long as we provide a safe environment, it should be the expectation of the people that use our facilities that it is safe. And if it's not safe, hey, that's us. We, we'll, we'll have to take the lawsuit. But, you know, we should provide a safe environment and reasonable cost. And I think that a quarter million dollars is a little exorbitant. If the Little League wants to continue with it, that's fine. They're going to have to sell more, more plants and more raffle tickets. But I would like to, it would be my suggestion that we keep with what the other municipalities use, that we make, ask them to sign the waivers to insulate us and provide a safe environment and ask for the $25,000 liability per, per, per kid. So that's just my recommendation. I know you guys had, had approved the insurance company's recommendations prior through resolution. So I don't know how we can go forward. I just, I just think it should be changed.
All right. What does Stephanie think? Stephanie, you still there?
I'm here. What do I, what do I think about?
In, in other words, what I hear... Uh, in, in other words, what I hear being, being brought up here is that there's, even though we may, we, we may feel we're reducing a safe environment and everything, uh, like gentleman has said, anybody can sue and they go, they will. You'll go after the, the, the big, the one with the biggest amount of money, which is, is the village. And so even though they may not get anywhere, we still have to pay an attorney. And attorneys can mount up very quickly. Is, is there, would you agree with that Stephanie or what would be your comment in that?
I do, but I don't know what kind of legal coverage we have through our insurance. I mean, are they obligated to defend us and to what amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then, so then we would spend a lot of money.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
So depending on the amount of coverage we have for litigation costs and defending us, I'm not sure why our bills would mount incredibly high. Is that not covered?
Yeah, uh, they would be covered, they'd be reimbursed. And then each year when the village's insurance comes up, that amount that the, the insurance company paid out for defense costs for their claim would be shown as a, a claim as a loss and that would stay for five years. So the insurance companies, they like to make money. And the way they make money is they charge and hope they don't pay out money. Um, so it's, it's um, I deeply care about the village and I'm doing my best to make recommendations to help insulate the village from claims that would increase your premiums.
So can we go back to where are we with the insurance? Would you be able to tell us that RJ? So each child, for each child, it's X amount of dollars and what is the coverage on that?
Sure, um, the first, the company I went to, um, just to lose online, was $6.28.
Okay.
It provided uh two key coverages. One, it provided the $250,000 of medical insurance in case a coach or a player or an umpire got injured. That's the 25,000. And the second thing it provides is um, provided $1 million liability insurance. It provided it to the league and also extended by additional insured coverage to the village. So it, it protected the village through that $1 million of coverage.
Okay, so now this is for the season? For the year?
Yes.
Okay, so Eric and Pat, it's Pat, right on the other person that was on, is that Pat?
Yes, yep.
So what are you paying the other communities per, like, you know, the insurance that you supply for, say, the town or do you know what it is per child?
Uh, yes, it's approximately $10 to $11 per child. We pay the town a court or no, we don't. What we do is we pay our insurance company, that we don't pay the towns anything.
Okay, so this is, this, what we're asking you is on top of.
Insured league that, that's what our insurance company charges us. It's $10 to $11 per player to play at Foxy Field, LaTiri, Seabolt and Sunset.
Okay.
We, we play uh just under $20 per kid to play at the Buchanan Pavilion for the 22, 24 kids that are registered to play there.
Did, did the insurance company explain why it's so much more? Is it just because of the limit? Is that the, the reason? That they charge so much more for the village than Courtland?
Uh, yes, because of the limit itself.
Okay.
Okay.
So and also because we have uh 192 kids registered at the $10, $11 per kid rate and only 24 for Buchanan.
Ah, okay, so the cost is more, but there's fewer participants for Buchanan?
Correct, exactly. We only have two teams that play games there.
Got it, I understand.
So this $6.28 would be on top of, so this would be what, what the insurance company is asking to pay for the village, village's requirement, is that correct?
Yes, and, and what I would tell you is, and I, I would, I would find out, I can go back to see which website it went on first for the $6.28. I was just trying to get a feel to, to the village uh back in April, what the cost could be to have this type of coverage. The 250,000 for the medical and $1 million for the, um, that could be high, could be, it could be low. It was the first one I went to. Um, so conceptually, what would happen is this is the insurance policy that the league would pay. It would be a certificate of insurance that we, the village, would get. And if there was an accident or a claim, we, the village, would know that um, we think what the prudent insurance is enforced and their policy is extended to protect the village.
Okay, I, I think, you know, honestly, we can go on and on, but I think this needs to be looked at further. I, I, there, there's some more questions here with this. So is it okay uh with the board and is it okay if we get back to the, the team after there's some more discussions with our insurance company?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not blocking them right now, they're still.
No, they're paid, so, yeah, they're, they're fine to use the field, everything's good to go.
So the, the second part of this was with the school district.
Right.
Can I just clarify one thing with the um, with our, just, just so I'm straight? Um, we're gonna, the, the village is gonna absorb the fee for the next two seasons, but track the expenses to see if that is viable for the future? Is that, is that what, is that what was decided?
I don't know, I was just saying to track the expenses this year and then review it for next season.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's what I was suggesting.
Okay, so you, you guys are paid for the spring season, so the summer and fall season, I, I believe the board is, is willing to, uh, no fee. And then we'll still continue to work on the insurance issue, that's, we gotta settle that, that's all. Okay? Any other questions?
Is the Little League okay with this? Is the Little League all right or are you?
Great, thank you very much.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, Bob, we can hear you, kind of.
You can hear me better now?
A little better.
Okay, I just went out, I came back in, I just wanted to answer a question, showing proposals for as to how we came across the fees?
Yes.
What's the question?
Bob was asking how we came to the fees. Go ahead, Bob.
The way we came across with the fees were when the field was first built, we talked to all our neighboring uh communities and asked what they were doing for the travel teams. And that's how we came across with the charge. And we actually lowered it from the original, from other surrounding areas due to charge for the travel teams. Just wanted to clarify that for, for showing, because we asked that question before.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob, thank you. Okay, so um fundraiser Sunday. I'd like to see the board donate to the Courtland National Little League. So get your checkbooks out, send your check in. So let's finish discussing the field, let's talk about the high school. So are we going to continue with the fees with the high school that we already have in place and uh the insurance?
Separate entity, have they complained?
No, well, they haven't really used the field yet either.
Okay, it's a separate entity, they haven't, they have not brought it up to us. I'd say just leave it, let's move on to the next item on the agenda.
Perfect, Danny.
Let's, let's leave it in there and uh, but given the scheduling, the, the Little League preference over scheduling versus the high school. If there's a conflict, the Little League beats the high school.
Yep, I think the Little League already has that preference. So they've already have their schedules, so whatever else the uh, the high school can put in, fit in there, then that's when they use it. All right, so we're moving right along.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
All right, Teresa, do you want to make a motion uh to, I guess, going forward for the rest of this season? Which I guess you're including uh summer and fall and make that motion so you guys can put that on the record?
Okay.
Yeah, it's very important to say that you're waiving the fee, so.
Yeah, okay.
I, I make a motion to waive the fee schedule that was imposed upon the Courtland Little League and Travel League for this season.
Thank you, Teresa, we appreciate that. So can.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought they asked for a motion.
Yeah, now Stephanie was, was speaking to you, that's fine, that's fine. So the motion is there, can we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, for reminding us, perfect.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, welcome.
Have a good one.
Okay, so we're moving along. We went out of order, but we're gonna go back to, um, we're gonna, a motion to open a public hearing to men, chapter 195, the water. We're gonna have a discussion on our water system, on a motion.
Don't move.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, is George Palmer with us?
I'm here.
George fell asleep. We are, George is here.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. So what we have in front of us is we're changing because I guess um if this is about our water service and we're not mirroring the village law. And I know George, you had gone through this, Stephanie, uh, you had looked through this to um, get this corrected.
Yep.
So George, do you have any comments?
So we uh, we found a leak in our system, just some background. Uh, good evening, uh mayor, board, uh trustees. Uh, so we, we did a survey of our system, we found a leak, we started to repair that leak. And when we repaired, uh, I'm sorry, we looked into the leak and how it gets repaired. We started looking in our code and our code, we found has some uh issues with it that. No. Favor. Has some issues in it that are, are not in favor of the village. And uh, it mirrors one of the neighboring towns. And when that, uh, when the cost of that issue came up, uh, it was decided to revamp this whole chapter 195. And uh Marcus, Stefan and I went through this code uh several times, made several changes. Um, you can see the red line in there. Every section of this code has been changed um to uh, to be in more in favor of the village and to have the costs be the burden of the applicant rather than be the burden of the village. So uh, that's, that's the whole background on it and uh, all the changes are in there that you can see. If there's any specific questions, we can go through it.
Okay, so a question I have on change number C. Where it says the, the village department is authorized agent can enter a building or premises basically for any reason to make a uh examination or repairs. That seems a little ominous, that, that means that if the village thinks that there's a leak or a problem with a meter, they can just access anybody's house whether there's cause or not cause. You, you have to have a reason to enter somebody's property. I think that could be abused terribly, that clause.
So we have similar clauses in the sewer ordinance as well. And these ordinances were put in in the 50s and 60s when the whole system was put in. And my thinking, I don't know how they came up with it, but the thinking is if you have a leak, you want to fix it right away. And um, that's, that's why it's in there. Uh, I don't know how it speaks to the property owner rights, but uh it, it was in there before in some fashion and we, we kept it in there and we modified it, so.
Yeah, I just.
Property owner doesn't want people to enter, then they won't enter, but then again, they might have a flooded basement.
Correct.
Doesn't matter, you're taking away the property owner's ability to prevent you from entering a structure without any court interaction. You're codifying basically entering your domicile to inspect a water meter. And I think, I, I, that, I, I don't like that at all. Because anything that you see ancillary to your inspection, you could report.
So if somebody has a water leak, they're gonna call the Village of Buchanan and say, hey, my, I got a water leak. I think it's my, my meter. I, I would think that the property owner would call the Village of Buchanan and say, hey, I've got a leak. Could you come over and check it out? I think it's at the meter. Um, but you know, people do have rights, Sean, but they don't necessarily have to allow other people in. So if, if the village thinks there's a leak, knock on the door, hey, I think you have a leak, can we come in to look? No. You're not coming in, you're not coming in.
But this is saying that he has the right, so they could just call a cop, say, hey, I'm going in there no matter what.
I believe they would have to have a court order at that time. I don't think the police officer would allow, could allow somebody to come in. I believe it would have to be by court order. Stephanie, what are your thoughts on that? You're the attorney.
Um, I'm still trying to digest it, thanks.
Well, what it says is that the village water department or, or its authorization may enter at any time a building or upon the premises where there is a supply pipe to a supply pipe or meter to make examination or repairs.
There should probably be some notice requirements.
There has to be something in there, you just can't make a law or a code that says I can enter your property whenever I want because I think your water meter is leaking. And then ancillary to your going in, you see something else that you report, you know? Anything that's in a, in the open can be reportable once you're in the structure, if I'm not mistaken. Even if you're not directly looking for it. So I, there has to be some kind of, there has to be some kind of rationale, there has to be something, so you know.
So you're talking about justification, some sort of.
Absolutely. Just to say for an examination. What's your basis for, for saying I have to examine? You see water coming out of foundation, fine, but you see increased water usage, I'm not so sure. You know what I mean? If the property owner asks you to come in, absolutely. But we had problems when we went to replace the meters. People were not allowing you to go in there. We had to do certain things to get them to go, to allow us to replace the meters. And you know, I just think that this clause can be abused, probably not today, maybe in five years. You know, you never know, you never know. If somebody's trying to.
Is our water department abusing that?
Hey, absolutely.
But I don't, so.
I don't see it either, but when you put that legislation in there, this is from 1959. Who knows what's gonna happen in 2040? There has to be some, some reason to enter a house.
Stephanie, how could we reword this?
I don't know, I'd have to give it some thought, we can reword it. We can make it, you know, there has to be some sort of reasonable justification or, and I think there should be notice too. I mean, I'm not a water person, so I don't know whether 24 hour notice is too much and would cost the bill, village a fortune. I really don't know how this works. But I, I kind of agree that you just don't want to knock on somebody's door at six at night and say, I'm coming in.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, the majority of the time, it's gonna be the person that's gonna detect this and call. We're not gonna be detecting it, you know, from, from outside of the person's structure.
That's not what this clause says.
But that's.
Stephanie, could you please reword that? Because obviously we're not gonna vote on this this evening.
Yep, sure.
There's some things that have to be addressed.
Yep.
So what else, what else is, um, do, does anyone see here what else is uh concerning to them?
Well, I really don't like that the property owners now have to take over from the main to the curb box. And that is a big change in all of the uh, in, in all of this code. You know, the old water mains were installed a long time ago. And you're, now you're gonna be pushing the cost on whether they were maintained or not. You're pushing the cost on to the homeowner.
So then would you like the village, the village, then the village will absorb the course, cost going forward? Is that what everyone is agreeable to?
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is that you're assuming that from the main to the curb box was properly maintained. I, I was always under the impression in a way, it was always worded before, from the curb box in was the property owner's responsibility. Because he could do the modifications, somebody could screw something up with the meter, somebody could dig a hole and break the water pipe. But I was always under the assumption inside of the curb, property owner owns. Outside of the curb, the village owns, you know?
I ask a question for clarification, when you said, when we say the curb box, are you referring, referring to the shut off that's with the spray painted blue cap that's in the front of our lawns?
Yeah, the isolation from the main to the property.
Okay.
Everything in border of that should be the village's responsibility. You know, this, like you said, this was put in 1958 and the pipes were put in way before that. Now you're gonna ask the property owner to assume, you know, half a century worth of maintenance or no maintenance. And if that pipe were to break today, now the property owner's gotta dig up the street. You know, because that pipe was not maintained properly.
Right, so is the board okay with from the property line to the, to the meter? That, they're fine with that? So what we're talking about here is from the, the curb to the property line.
The curb box, the isolation valve, somebody isolation.
Yeah, I thought that's what this place is talking about, like down below under one, under the uh 195 dash two section B, where it says the property owner shall make all excavations, including necessary holes through any foundation walls from the, from the, oh, oh, I'm sorry, we're changing. It was originally worded curb, curb box.
Yeah.
And we're changing it to water main, I see.
Yeah, so we're, we're making, we're making, we're making an independent contractor work on our water mains, basically.
Okay.
Because there's no isolation between the isolation valve and, and the main.
Okay, is there, isn't there, wasn't there some issue with the, as long as the curb box is at the curb? Was, didn't we have a situation where somebody, where the, where the um, where the shut off and the um, uh, the um, the shut off and the meter had been moved into the building, isn't that how this arose?
That's correct, so that B paragraph.
So we had an exception and that's why. So we had an exception and that's why we were going with this change.
Correct. So it says for B, it says for new connections. So what we're saying is if you put in, if you have a new house and you're, you're putting in a new connection, you're going to assume that they have a contractor that's, or you're going to get, you're going to go through a building permit process. And you're going to have a contractor come in and, and make a tap in the main, which the water department's going to oversee, make that tap and then bring it all the way into the house. So it, it's really added on to the cost of the house. So we're not talking about from the curb box into the house or curb box to the main.
Oh, I agree with that. I agree with that. Every, every, every new construction requires a licensed plumber to do the tap with an inspection from a city official.
Right.
And sometimes the city will, will, will supply the curb, curb valve.
Correct.
Sometimes they won't. It's in, under the, whatever, whatever contract they have. So this is only for new construction, that clause, not for existing construction?
No.
Existing is, is, is taken care of by the city, by the village. All right. So for George, for the existing structures, the line of demarcation is the isolation valve, correct?
Correct. It used to be the curb itself. We just moved it to the curb box. So you were right before.
As long as it's only for new construction, I don't have an issue with that.
Clarification is the blue text on here, new or, or, or the, or the red?
Both.
The blue and the red.
Blue and the red. Multiple changes.
Yeah. So the blue is the first revision and the red is the second revision?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the only comments that I had on this.
Okay. Any other
One other question on the, on the meters. It says meters up to one inch in diameter. What does that mean?
So those are typically, we tried to make a distinction between a commercial service and a residential service. So a residential service is one inch. And
But that's the line. One inch is the pipe.
That's the pipe size, pipe diameter.
Okay. Because the way this is worded, it says meters up to one inch in diameter. That's, that's bad wording.
Oh, the meter size and the valve size is determined by the pipe size. So all, all, all fixtures are determined by the pipe inlet and outlet.
But it's not, the, the meter itself is not meters up to one inch diameter. It should be meters on one inch pipes, not, not meters up to one inch diameter. Sorry, I used to teach English.
Yeah, but if you go to, if you go to a store to buy a one inch valve, it's a valve that says one inch. It's based on an inlet and outlet size. That's how you determine components.
Is the meter one inch?
The inlet and outlet, yeah.
Yeah, the inlet and the outlet of the meter is one inch. Yes.
That would make sense.
So that, so, so we are actually talking about the size of the meter. Not just the size of the pipe.
We're talking about the inlet and outlet size of, on the meter.
So it's good English. I just don't know my plumbing.
Equipment terminology. How's that?
Thank you.
Over one inch would be considered commercial.
Correct.
Thank you. I rest my case.
So George, over one inch would be a commercial connection?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, unfortunately, because we have to change the wording in here. I'm going, we opened, we opened the public hearing on this. So if there's no other comments right now, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to amend chapter 195 underwater.
Well, does, did anybody from the, from the public have a chance to comment?
No, I didn't. I, I apologize. We always want the public to comment. Cindy, anyone out there? My apologies.
No.
I see a raised hand.
If you want to raise your hand, is there anybody on Facebook, on, on our Zoom? Is anybody?
Yeah. I, hold on, Eileen, hold on.
Oh, sure. Hi, Eileen.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, where do we, where do I find that pipe? From the curb?
They're not going to see it. It's underground. So it's going to come into your water meter in your basement.
Oh, I know the pipe is underground. I'm saying.
Eileen, somewhere within a few feet of the curb, there should be, and it could be covered over with grass. There should be about a four inch diameter metal cap. It should be spray painted blue. And, and it's underneath that cap that the shut off valve, the, the feed to your house, shut off valve is there.
Okay, great.
So to answer your question even further, the water department takes measurements from the corners of your house or has measurements from the corner of your house to where that box is located. So if you call the water department and ask them to mark it out, they can mark it out at any time.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
For a fee. I'm just kidding.
Any other public comment? Because we, if not, we'll adjourn this and we're going to open the public hearing up again. So if anybody has any questions when we open it up again, of course, they'll be able to comment. So no one else has a hand raised?
Motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're moving on to, for our motion to ward a bid for the Albany Post Road valve insertion at Blakely Avenue. And this has been an ongoing issue. So
Teresa, that's Albany Post Road, not Blakely.
That's what it, oh geez, look at this mark. This, it had Blakely Avenue here and I just read that. Yes, it is Albany Post Road. My apologies again. Okay, yes. So all right, so we, we do have a low bidder here. On April 22nd, three bids were referenced for the project. And we, and were received and publicly read aloud at Village Hall. The project was legally advertised in the Journal News. The work consisted of providing all the labor, materials and equipment to insert a valve into an eight inch ductile iron water main at the intersection of Albany Post Road and Blakely Avenue in Buchanan, New York. This is a New York State DOT roadway and the existing roadway will be removed. The area excavated and supported, then restored upon installation of the valve in accordance with the requirements of the Westchester County Department of Health, New York State Department of Transportation, Village Buchanan Water Department, and is directed by the engineer. The bids, Fazella Brothers came in at 19,900. MTS Infrastructure came in at $42,771.49. And Ginfia Corporation came in at $99,556. So quite a range of bid amounts. So on a motion to approve the bid.
Make a motion to award the bid for the Albany Post Road valve insertion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's get that project done. Okay, consider a motion, okay, to authorize the village engineer to go out for bid for the Route 9A sidewalk project. So we are finally ready to go out to bid on this. George, if you want to do a summary, this was one of the one of the things that we were able to get. I'm sorry, it's, it's been a long day. One of the grants that we were able to get through Sandy Galiff's office to, to do a section of the road on Albany Post Road, a sidewalk. And George, if you'd like to add on to that?
Sure. Yeah, we met out there. We had, the state was coming through. They were doing their paving project. I believe Nick and Teresa, we were out there and we looked at the section in front of Rulindo from Blakely all the way up to the end of Rulindo's first property. And we got, we were able to get the DOT to make those improvements. And that left the piece in between the, the gas station and the end of Rulindo's property. And you mentioned, Mayor, the, got a grant. And the state said, we wanted to use their contractor to finish it off. And they said, no, you have to give us engineering. You have to give us drawings. You have to go out to bid. And that's part of your grant requirement. So that's what we did. So we've been going back and forth with the DOT. And we got our final comments. We should be getting a permit shortly. But we are able to go out to bid. Hopefully we can get it done before winter. It shouldn't only take two or three weeks to do. It's a really short project. It'd probably take longer to bid than to do. So here we are. So we need
Everything we, it's like everything we discussed takes longer to talk about than to do.
Yeah, we've been working on this, what, two years now? Is, is it about two years?
Oh, no, not quite.
No.
But I think well, not too far off, over a year. But that, so the grant money is, 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 is in now.
Yes.
We have, we, we're getting that grant. It's not being held up by the state anymore?
I don't think it was, it wasn't being held up by the state. The state was demanding that we do a design. We go through the design process rather than have their contractor just build it.
Oh, okay. I thought that the state was sitting on all grant money and, and and there was a delay in the money coming through. But, okay.
That's on the pavilion, Nick, on the pavilion. That's being still held up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we're, we're still working on that too. But now with the camp starting the end of June, that's going to have to go on hold until they're done with the camp. But that's the pavilion. So right now, I'd like to make, if no one else has any questions for George, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the village engineer to go out to bid for the Route 9A sidewalk project.
A move.
Second.
Okay, on a question?
Is this a part of the community development block grant money? Did we get any of that or it was something separate?
This, I believe, is separate. This was through Sandy Galiff. You have to be very careful, you know, when you accept the, the community development block grants, you have to be very careful with that because there's always a little something added on to that. We asked on a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, approved. Okay, so here comes the next controversial thing. Consider a motion to approve building department fee schedule.
Uh, no, you, you skipped the high school.
Oh, I thought we had finished with the high school. I thought that was
No, we only did a little league.
Okay, I thought we finished that. We were going to leave that with the same, the same. Okay.
You have a motion to allow them to use the field.
I got it. Consider a motion to allow the Hendrick Hudson School District to use the Westchester Avenue field for baseball. And on a motion?
Vote.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, that's settled. Okay, so now we're moving along to the, the building department fee schedule, which became quite, quite the controversial thing last time. We have Peter Cook with us. Peter, would you like to make a statement or say anything before we get into this again?
Well, certainly, Mayor. There's a little bit of confusion on the last meeting. I apologize for that. I'd like to clarify that our fee schedule for plumbing, electric and building permits is the same as it was prior. Doing maintenance work on your home, that's the, how I'm going to look at that as maintenance. Faucet replacement is a slight example. Those, you should have a licensed professional to install in your house, but the village is not looking for a building permit for that or electrical work. So maintaining things in your own home, hiring someone as a homeowner, that's a responsibility for you. We are not involved in that. As a building project, the permits are the same. So that's, I want to clarify that.
Okay, so under maintenance, what, what are some of the plumbing or electrical things you would consider maintenance? So for example, changing a light bulb.
Changing a light bulb. That's homeowner maintenance, all maintenance.
Okay, changing a washer.
A washer machine, you're, a washer and a faucet related item, plumbing washer or washing machine.
Washer.
Washer. Okay, same thing.
Already got one.
So if it's maintenance, repair?
Yes, repair and maintenance. That's the
Repair, maintenance.
I think terminology.
A permit would not be needed.
No, no, it's not required.
So where we got off the track last time is that, and I know people were upset, is this, what you're talking about is new construction.
New construction or renovation work, repair, you know, kitchens, bathrooms, alteration work, not maintenance items. Maintenance items are just that. As a homeowner, you should hire a licensed professional to do though, certain things. But other than that, we are not involved in permitting any of that. So our schedule, our existing schedule for our building permit, electrical permit and plumbing permit are the same. Nothing's changed. We don't want to alter any of that except the final end fee because we're much lower than other people, other municipalities. I spoke with Croton, Cortland D. Peekskill about this matter also with the maintenance items. And they're of the same mindset that it's, there's no involvement of the building department. I don't understand. I apologize that that went so far at the other direction that it got misunderstood. But that's not what we were saying, that you need to get a permit, $150 permit to replace a faucet. Maintenance, maintenance is the key word and repair. So that's where I would like to clarify that. I hope that's easier, more, easier to understand that definition of everything.
Yeah, I think we had people very upset. And thank you for the clarification, you know, and of course, as always, if people have questions, you're available.
I, I wish more people would call. I've had many people call and I have explained it to them and they understood that it was just a misunderstanding. It wasn't clear enough. But again, Mike, my statement of a licensed professional should be doing it is as a homeowner. You know, you shouldn't, you shouldn't, you're not legally, you're not supposed to touch electrical work. You know, switches, circuits, if you're running anything new. But again, we're not asking for a permit for that. That's maintenance items. You want to put a ceiling fan in, replace a fixture, your faucet, simple things. But if you're moving plumbing, if you're adding new electric, it has to be a licensed professional. And you do require a permit for those bigger items, not the small items. Does that, does that, does everyone understand what I'm trying to explain? Sense?
What about these outdoor, the portable outdoor fireplaces? You know, you see them making, almost like, look like wicker baskets or something.
Is it, is it a fuel fired appliance, a propane unit?
Uh, no, let's take this water or coal.
Like a fire pit. He's talking like a fire pit in the backyard.
You burn physical wood in or propane powered?
He's saying wood. He's saying, I think Rich is saying you throw some wood back there.
Yeah, there are certain state requirements for where you have this open burning, but it's not a permit item to do that. There are safety requirements that must be adhered to.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay.
What is it? It's supposed to be 25 feet from the house? Is that what you just said?
An open, open flame.
An open flame device is supposed to be 25 feet away from a structure or any combustibles.
That would probably be a wise thing to do.
Just a little.
Yes.
You shouldn't have it under your deck.
No.
That's what I've been using for firewood, my deck.
It's great. It's good stuff. So can I, yes, please.
So just a comment on the adjustments to the fee schedule since last time. There were a couple of things we discussed last time.
Yes.
And one was the demolition. And I like the, the new formula that you proposed, which is
$100.
A $100 fee plus 50 cents per square foot. Which means if you have, if you're demolishing a 2,000 square foot house, it's $1,100.
Yes.
And before it was a 2,000 blanket fee.
Yes.
So now if you have a thousand square foot house or, or 4,000 square foot house, you're going to pay accordingly. You know, which reflects the amount of work. And so it's, yeah, I like this formula much better. It seems more fair.
It's also proportionate to our commercial recommendation also.
Yes. Okay, great.
That was one of the most important things we would like the board to please address this evening, if we could possibly have a, a resolution. Is that the word, a resolution on that? At least that one. I know there's a lot of items on here and it is getting late for everyone. And we can address other things at another time. I just wanted to clarify the maintenance item for permits, permitting on your home. And the demolition, those are the two most important things at, at the moment. We have, we are, we could still discuss other things at a later point. They're all important.
One question I have on, on the generator permits.
Yes.
Already requiring to get electrical plumbing permits, why is there another fee just to put the generator on a pad?
Basically, well, the pad has to be inspected. It has to be a cement pad. First thing, we need to inspect the disconnect, how they sleeved it into the house. There, we have to inspect the installation. Yeah, it has to be corrected, spaced correctly from openings in the, in the residence. There's a lot of requirements of building. There's a lot of code on generator installation. That's why we're involved.
No, they're, they're already required.
Yeah, nothing to do with the electrical plumbing. That's still required.
Okay. Okay. Do we, do we want to go through each item? Or do, does the board want to pick items that are of concern to them?
Then we got, I think we went through it last time and we just, we only had a few things that were, that people questioned. I don't think we need to go through it again.
Okay, just asking, just wanted to double Okay, just asking, just wanted to double check.
The other thing that came up last time was the, was with the portable storage lockers or pods that it's been removed from here for later consideration.
Yeah, for later consideration.
Conflicting part of the code, so we have to
Yes.
readdress that separately.
So that's what we're gonna do next month because we're gonna call for a public hearing for June 1st on that, Nick.
Yeah.
And could the board also possibly address the actual building permit adjustment or recommendation that we had to be more comparable to the surrounding municipalities? We have a $150 fee up to $10,000, which is acceptable comparably to other municipalities. But we are at $12 per thousand after, and 17 is more the average of most municipalities. We're a little low on that part of the schedule.
I'm fine with that, with that proposal.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicholas.
Okay.
Everything, the other items, again, I apologize for the hour. I know it's getting late for everyone.
Yeah, I know. Our meetings are, you know, we got a lot going on.
I'm on vacation. Come on, let's not just hang on.
On the agenda, sorry.
It's gonna be $100 an hour, Nick, to be here. I'm supposed to be working overtime right now.
I just have one question.
Yeah, I've been there many times too.
Somebody installing, or somebody having installed central air conditioning, you know, where the house wasn't built with central air, but then they did central air.
Yeah.
Right to the fee?
Yeah, that, that is, well, in other municipalities, it's called a mechanical permit, Rich, and it does require, there's a lot of energy code requirements and installation requirements, and they're of new, of the new code, 2020 code.
Where would it be on ours?
Well, we didn't, we don't, the village never had a mechanical code, so we just put it together with the building permit as a whole.
Oh, okay, all right.
What about the HVAC?
Yes, that's mechanical. Well, it all depends which part of HVAC, because they're split units.
Yeah, it just says same as building.
Yes, that's, that's exactly what that means, mechanical. We're calling it HVC mechanical, so to say.
Okay.
Is that, clarify that, Rich?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions I could possibly answer?
Comments, questions on this fee schedule?
I guess that's a good, that's a good, excellent.
Yeah, anything I had questions on, I brought up last time, and we readdressed it, so.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Is everybody comfortable with this? Because I'm gonna make a motion in one minute. Cindy, I can hear you. Is there, is there a hand up? Oh, Eileen? Yeah, I apologize. Go ahead, Eileen.
Again, she's on-
Hey, Eileen, you're up, Eileen.
Peter, I just wanted to know what was involved with the demo fee. I know I was on the workshop, but for the people that might not have been, could you just say if it was sheds, if it was garages, you know?
We were, we were speaking more in reference to single-family homes. Sheds and things, I believe, were a very, they were $25 in the existing fee schedule, if I remember sheds.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, I'm sorry, there was another section of older code in the village.
Peter, I want to explain that when we come through a shed, it's only if you need to, if I'm correct, it was a permitted shed, correct?
Permitted shed, that's, I'm sorry, that's what I meant to, yes. Something that required a permit to the installation would have to be, as a demolition permit, be taken back off the tax roll.
Okay.
We would want it to be taken off the tax roll anyhow.
That's why, I'm sorry, I didn't have it done.
Sure.
That's all right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Eileen, for asking.
One, one thing, Mr. Cook, do we always had that solar fee in there, correct?
Let me go back to our-
Was it, was it, is that a new one that you put in there? That was always a- So I wonder if you could tell us how much money we received from the solar installation at the Lafarge Gypsum Plant. It was a $6 million project, if I remember correctly, or four or five million. We should have received quite a hefty amount of money. Like, you know, offhand, or I'm sure, you know, we wouldn't be able to pull that up right now.
Yes, I, I don't have that information in front of me, Sean. But we're, we're relating this more in reference to a residence than a commercial project.
But it doesn't matter. It's a code, you know, it doesn't say commercial or resident. Code's a code.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, and I'm just pulling from my memory banks, I want to say it was close to $25,000, the fee, for those to be put on, and, and those solar panels are the largest in the state.
So I didn't, I just didn't remember if this was a new thing or old thing. I wasn't wrong. All right, cool.
I just had one, a last thing I just noticed here, with compliant, I mean municipal search, rather.
Yes.
Does that mean that a taxpayer going in, that they want to make sure that, that if they just bought a house, that there was a CO that, for a certain thing, they had to pay $25 for a copy of it?
I think, isn't that if there's a realtor that comes in to do municipal search, and the house goes up?
Yeah, title company, realtor.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's their end of it, Rich.
Okay, thanks very much, right.
No problem.
I do have one comment from someone. Dan asks, just another way for the village to scam money from residents. So I just wanted to put that comment out there.
Thank you.
So, but, you know, this is, this is, all the municipalities have fees for certain items. There's reasons for the fees. It's not like we're trying to shake people down. It's-
Teresa, if I may, again, this is to try to recoup the cost for individuals doing work in the house. That way, the, the expense for the building department is not subsidized by their general tax base. So that's what every municipality does to try to recoup this cost, not to make money, but to recoup the cost.
All right. Thank you, Marcus. So, on a motion to approve the building department fee schedule?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Teresa, if I may, I just got a text from Nancy. Would you mind? I know it's not on the agenda. There was a request of the board about the pool fees and what we're gonna do. If the board doesn't mind, if the board's going to consider-
Nancy, I apologize. Yeah, she's been waiting, so.
Yes.
Yes, if anyone wouldn't mind, if Nancy could speak about the pool fees for one minute. Thank you, Nancy, I'm sorry.
Sure, not a problem. Um, we're trying to decide what to do this year with how to charge people coming to the pool. I know that Town of Cortland is requiring anyone who enters to have a pool pass, not just the ID, but the pool pass. You have to also go online and schedule your time. That we're not doing. And if you don't have a cool pass, you can't enter the pool, and you're not allowed to bring any guests. So the question is, how are we going to do it this year? I really, really want to get away with handling cash up at the pool. I think it's just better not to handle cash. But, you know, if we do the pool passes, I can send a flyer out to all the schools. I can send, you could do the Facebook. I could do my private Facebook, you know, saying that if you want to enter the pool, you have to have a pass, and you have to buy it in June. All right, Town of Cortland, I believe, is doing that as well. So I want to know everybody's thoughts on that. So that's, that's what I want to know.
The only thing I, I would, I, you want to get away from cash because of the COVID? Is that what you want, or do you want to permanently?
Just a pain in the butt because they don't always remember to bring it down the next day. And, you know, it's, it's just a pain in the butt to have cash.
All right, so the other thing is, is there any way we can go on a monthly pass thing? Because sometimes, the unfortunate thing is, you know, some people want to use the pool. It's a 90-degree day, they don't have a pass, and they want to come in. So that's, that's the only drawback.
I, I understand that, but that's with any pool. And in our times now, people understand COVID. They know there are different rules. They know there are different ways of doing things. And to assume that you can just show up to a place and go in, I don't think is reasonable.
Are you only asking for this year right now?
Yes.
Might be, okay, good.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I have no problem with that pass.
I just don't like the idea of having to get a season pass to go there four or five times a day, a year. You know, and, you know, you don't have that many people that go into that pool to begin with, and having, having a cash box of $100 a weekend or $200 a weekend, I don't think is that cumbersome. You know, so that's just my, I, I think it should be open to village residents. You didn't have 20 people in there every weekend anyway, you know?
The pool, the pool is open to village residents and non-residents. Non-residents obviously charge a higher fee. And we did change that a couple of years ago, just so you're aware of that, Sean.
It changed, it changed many years ago because it was discriminatory. We weren't allowed to do that a long, long time ago.
Right, so we allow non-residents to come in, but we also have the authority to kick anybody who's unruly out. I don't think we've ever done that. Okay, I've been there 12 summers, and I don't think we've ever done that. You know, I'm just trying to make it easier. I would love to have a crowded pool, but obviously not this summer. We are not based on capacity in the pool. We are based on capacity of the land we have surrounding the pool for our patrons to sit. So we will have to go through it and mark out spaces for two people, spaces for four people, spaces for 10 people, so that people can have areas to sit, but there will have to be marked spaces. Okay, just so that you guys are aware of that.
I hate to have too many restrictions. I've gone, it's a beautiful pool. I've gone down there just to see what was going on, and there's nobody there. It's just, you know, you can go on a Saturday or Sunday or any, a weekday, and there's, there's just the lifeguards there. And I, I hate to, I really, I understand what you're saying, Nancy, but I really, I really hate to resist.
If we do cash, then we need to make it even amounts, 5, 10, or 15. Okay, I'm not, this $8, or $6, or $4, where you have to give back singles. That's too difficult because they run out of singles. And then one lifeguard has to leave, go down to find a store that will give them singles. And it's not gonna do that. A lot of places don't do that anymore.
So just remind me what the fee is again, because I, I don't remember. For a single person going in from a village resident, what is that? Do you remember?
I believe it was like $8, but I really think it should be $10. And I don't think we should do after 4:00 PM. You know, they're using the pool regardless. So I think it should be a daily rate, a set rate.
And what was the season pass for residents?
A, a single, I think, is 100. A family is 200.
Yeah, okay, so let me ask a question. If we're setting up for people to be able to pay bills online, can we include pool fees, and then all somebody has to do is use an iPad at the pool and go on the village website and pay the pool fee directly? Marcus, is that feasible?
Uh, just a little, we're looking at internet access to the pool. I don't know if we'll be able to do it by June, and also the credit card application.
What do you mean, internet access?
We don't have internet access at the pool building. We have internet access-
Yeah, okay.
And so that's one IT issue that we can resolve. Uh, and then also the credit card. We had a conference call today. I was gonna update you guys about that too. There's a little delay on that as well to get the system up and running. We not, might not be able to do it by June, but we'll probably could do it in July. Uh, but I have to give you the cost if the village boards wanted to expend the money to give internet access to the pool building.
Don't they have to do a line underground or?
We'll have to have, we'll have to run the ethernet line to the building underground to get internet access.
Yeah.
Boy, we got a phone there. Let's, let's get an old dial-up modem. I love the sounds they used to make.
I don't think you can use that anymore. It's too slow.
You know, it depends on the cost for the two months or three months that the pool is used, you know, so that, that's just something that has to be looked at. It might, it might not be worth our while.
If you want, if you want the price up, we'd be more than happy to get the price to run a line down there. But like I said, June, it might be too, too tight to do that, probably for July, but I can get you, if the board wishes, I can get you the cost, and then what the monthly cost would be for, for internet access to the building, if you like.
I think it's gonna be cost prohibitive in the end.
Whatever you guys like.
Thank you.
So, you know, I'm willing to do the cash, but I want to make sure that we do it in even amounts, 5, 10.
How about at the beginning of season, Nancy, I come down and give you $1,000 bills so you can take care of it? You know, that, that's a, that's a sad reason.
No.
To change the price and the whole process because you can't get change.
No, I don't, because I don't want to keep that kind of cash on premises, okay? There's-
I'll come down every week and give you 100 singles. How's that? I'll come down every Friday and give you 100 singles.
No.
That's a bad excuse. That's, you know, that's, that's wrong. You're gonna raise the price.
Raise it to $5 for children and $10 for adults. I don't think that's unreasonable. I would really push the passes, and non-residents, obviously, more. But, you know.
It's my recommendation that we would keep the fee schedule the same, that we allow access to the pool the same way. Uh, that's just me. I appreciate Nancy's concerns. We can limit it at whatever the CDC or the state says today, you know, but I think forcing everybody to use a pool pass or a yearly pass or raising the prices because we can't give change, I, I think that that's, that's not right. The school, the, the pool is not that utilized that much, and putting more restrictions on it is just another reason why we shouldn't have it. If you're gonna limit people from going in after 4 o'clock or 5 o'clock, why not just close it at 4 or 5 o'clock? You know, it could be increasing the capacity and increasing the availability of the service that the village can provide.
Lower the price at 4 o'clock. I think that's so. That's my opinion. I've been running the pool 12 years, and very few people come in after 4 o'clock, so just leave it the same price.
Yeah, I'm just concerned. I don't want to turn anyone away. If it's 99 degrees, then, you know, they want to jump in the pool, and there's nobody in there anyhow, you know.
Right, that's why I changed that policy years ago. Before, non-residents had to come in with a resident. Now, pay the fee, they don't need to do that. We switched that many years ago.
What about if we kept the-
We're more than welcome to go ahead and leave it the same, but I wanted to put it out there that a pass is a wonderful idea. Let's not do the pass this year, and let's see how Town of Cortland does with their passes. You know, because they have a pass, they don't guest, they're not allowed guests. So I think we will increase our numbers coming up to the-
What do you guys think of, for non-residents, that you have to, if you want to use the pool, you have to get the seasonal pass, but allow residents to come in on a daily basis?
Well, that means all the students that are coming up to the pool without their parents are gonna have to have an ID to prove residency. And it's the people on 99 degrees day that we get that are non-residents.
Yeah, I guess kids don't carry IDs, huh?
No, they don't.
Well, Teresa knows everybody. Just have everybody call Teresa for approval.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Nick, yeah. On top of everything else, sure, no problem. All right, so what do we want to do? Just leave it the same and allow people to come in and when they, when they want to, if they don't have a pass. I know it's easier to have a pass, but it's, it's promoting the pass is important too.
Do you want to promote a pass, though, regardless that we'll, we'll still be accepting cash? Or do you want to skip passes altogether?
Put it, put it in a newsletter. We, we always have, we, we went to try, we went to try and get passes instituted many years ago, and we advertised it a lot. We actually gave discounts. We, we changed our schedules to encourage that. So sure, you can encourage it, plan, sure, absolutely.
I mean, I, I would also, I would put a flyer out to all the schools so that they know the pool is available and open, and I'd put all the prices on there. I mean, if you want to drum up more business, that's, I'm more than willing to do that.
I think, I think we really need to have the pool used more. It's really a waste. You know, after, after camp, there's hardly anybody there.
Right, during here.
Up to the board.
Only, we are not allowing patrons during camp hours.
Correct, right, yes, because you have the kids in the pool. Yes, that I understand.
Yeah, okay. So the pool won't even be open till 3 o'clock during weekdays, during the first six weeks of camp.
Well, then not letting people in after 4 would make no sense.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm not letting people in after 4. I said changing the price of when people come in.
Oh, okay.
That's what I, not letting people in. We're open till 7, sometimes even 8, on those really hot days, if my guards can stay.
Okay, is the board good with that? We'll leave it the same and see if we can promote some, some passes and we can-
Yeah, well, we could, you know, for one thing, promote it, send out a flyer to, with the newsletter, promoting family passes, you know. People's habits and how they spend their time has changed a little, a little bit since COVID, and people will be looking for things to do, and outdoor things are generally pretty safe things to do.
And reducing the fee after 4 o'clock because we're not allowing anybody in there until after 3 o'clock would be more beneficial to the village also.
But also, if during that time, then if we don't even open till 3 during the camp hours, then I will sit down this week and figure out the solid fee. I'm not gonna go from a 3- the solid fee. I'm not gonna go from a three o'clock to a four o'clock changing the fee. So I'll just make it whatever.
Gotcha.
Good. All right, thank you, Nancy. And George, if no one has any questions for George, George has to tuck some babies in. Okay, George, thank you for coming on. Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, George.
All right, so we're moving on to consider a motion for a public hearing on June 1st, 2021 to modify Chapter 137, Article 2.3 entitled Portable On-Demand Storage Units. So that's where we're gonna be talking about that. We're gonna have a public hearing on June 1st.
Can I, um, can I just clarify for you?
Sure, please.
It's my understanding that we are simply changing or removing the $25 fee that appears in Article 2.3 AMB.
Correct.
Changing the language to say in accordance with the fee schedule adopted by the Board of Trustees, right?
Correct.
That's part of the resolution, has to be adding it into the fee schedule, cause right now, I don't think it was added into the fee schedule.
That's correct. That's part of the discussion. When you adopt that, when you, hopefully when you adopt that local law to take it off, then the board also then agreed to a fee to be put under the fee schedule, correct?
Yes. I may, we'll discuss it at the next workshop and.
And then we'll also put it up for a public hearing. Okay, on, okay. On a motion to, uh, hold a public hearing on June 1st, 2021. Modify Article 37, or, uh, Chapter 137, Article 2.3 entitled Portable On-Demand Storage Units. I have a motion second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. So now, um, this is what we do every year. We hire seasonal help. It does say, say two people. We currently have one person. So from May 7th, 2021 to August 31st, 2021, at the rate of $14 an hour. The person is Matt Eichler. So I would like, Bob, you've, you've spoken to him and interviewed him and, um, so you're good with Mr. Eichler coming into work as a seasonal help?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're still looking for one other person, one or two other people for seasonal highway help. So anybody that knows anybody, please, you know, have them come into the office to fill out an application. Um, on a motion?
I'll move.
Hire Matt Eichler for the, uh, season, for, as a seasonal highway employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, on a question, the motion.
Sorry, on a question, go ahead, sorry.
The motion says appoint two seasonal highway people. Are we only appointing one or?
Yes, we're only.
Are we authorizing the expenditure for two if we get somebody or?
Well, if, if the board doesn't mind, I, I really would like to authorize hiring two people. So if Bob does find somebody, we don't have to wait until the June meeting, that we can just automatically get them appointed.
If I, if I may, that's really something that Bob would like to do because he's been having a difficult time finding somebody. If somebody does come out of the woodwork now, uh, these kids, uh, a lot of kids we can't find. If we get somebody good, I would like to hire them, but if we have to wait to June, they might get a job someplace else and we lose them. So if the board is okay with that, with the same hourly rate, I know Bob is having difficulty communicating, but I think Bob would like to have the board consider that if they may.
So whoever made the motion, they'll have to amend their motion then.
I'm gonna go back and amend the motion, change the motion even better. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint two people as seasonal highway help from, well, Matt Eichler will be from May 7th to August 31st at the rate of $14 an hour. And also I would like to include another person, um, at the same rate for the beginning time is still to be determined until August 31st, 2021. On a motion.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the next is consider a motion regarding a new service of allowing credit card and e-check processing of tax payments and water payments. Um, Marcus or Cindy, would you like to explain?
Uh, I'll, I'll let Cindy start and then I can chime in if you need to.
Sure.
Sorry. Okay, so like I said the other day, this is just so taxpayers can pay their bills online. Make it easier. They can do it 24/7. You just go onto our website and then link to the bank website and put in their information, their routing number and account number and pay their bill.
Right, and there's a small fee for that, right? I, I did the town.
Oh, a dollar, a dollar eighty-five per resident, thank you.
That's what the town fee was too.
Yes, and three and a half percent if you pay with a credit card.
Okay, so don't pay with the credit card.
And just, and just to let everybody know, um, we, we had a discussion with the bank today. Um, there, there was some a little concern between our software company and them to communicate, share files. So we might not be able to get it for the June tax bill. We're trying to see if they can do it. If that doesn't work, then we'll do the next water billing, but we'll let the board know and if we get it done, we'll, uh, what's in a newsletter, Facebook, um, uh, website. But I don't think we'll be able to get the tax bills done, but if we do, we'll let everybody know. Worst, and worst case scenario, we'll get the water bills done. Right, Cindy?
Right, correct.
All right, so to let everybody know, thank you.
Okay, so a motion, um.
Just a question, what is, what do we mean, what is an e-check?
It's like, eh, eh, e-check is electronic check. So you put your.
You mean like an automatic debit from your account thing?
Correct. You put your checking account information, your bank code, your bank account on there and then you'd be, and that's why it's a cheaper fee. It's considered an ACH transaction versus a credit card transaction.
It's very easy to do.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, so on a motion to, uh, to allow a new service of allowing credit card and e-check processing of tax payments and water payments.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So the next is I'm going to have, uh, either Marcus or Cindy. This is, um, gonna allow us for the treasurer to make all required budget transfers as we do each, at the end, the close of each fiscal year, which is the end of this month uh, for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. Um, Marcus or Cindy?
Sure, uh, Cindy is treasurer. I'll talk, I'll talk a little bit. Um, this is something we do every year to make all necessary budget modifications and transfers that are necessary to close the books for the year. Also, the auditors will come and make adjustments as well. Uh, we'd be more than happy to, of course, to, um, provide you with the list of transactions right after the auditor finishes, or we can give you the Charles transactions as we do them. I just wanna get a blanket resolution done so we can actually move forward with the closing of the books. We're actually making adjustment entries as we speak. And that will continue on until the audit is completed. So Cindy, anything else you wanna add?
No, you're good. Thank you.
Sit up. Okay, any questions from the board? Comments?
No.
Okay, so on a motion for the treasurer to make all required budget transfers, adjustments and amendments to close the 2020, 2021 fiscal year as required for the annual audit.
I'll move.
Second. On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next is we're discussing the general code. Um, we do have a packet on that. The gentleman came to speak last meeting um, about the general code review. Um, so we're going to be taking a vote on that. Does anybody have any comments before we get to the vote?
Uh, just to let everybody know, I, I gave the board an update. There was some question about actually having, having manual, uh, paper hard copies. So I emailed the board. That was, that was five, minimum of five books for $500. So that's the only amendment to the agreement if you wish to do that. So the, the price to do the code was 11,000 and change. If you want the hard copy books of five books, it'd be additional $500.
500 total or 500 each?
500 for five, for five books.
So 100 each. I, you know, what's the board think? I don't think, uh, you know, there's a lot of paper in there. There's a, there's a pretty big book.
It's always good to have a hard copy in case you have database issues or even if somebody were to hack in our system, we would have the reference points. And I believe they said in their proposal, they were gonna provide the maintenance of those books for code changes.
Correct.
So, uh, whenever we make a code change, they'll give us the addendums and we could trade out our pages. Having five books is not that onerous and I think it's a benefit.
I think for a hundred dollars a book, I, I think it's a no-brainer. I think I personally would rather have, you know, I'd rather have it in my hands, the paper in my hands anyhow.
Up to this point, every zoning board member was handed a copy. Every person on the village board has a copy. Uh, does that mean we do not intend to supply board members with books anymore?
Well, Nick, when those copies were supplied to all of the board members, we didn't have access to an online village code. We did not have a keyword code search. So the only way to look things up was through the book. So I, I know we haven't, I don't believe we've ordered new code books and I don't believe all of the new members have gotten code books, but we have circumstances have changed.
Big time. Yeah.
Yeah, but some of us are old and used to paper.
So, so we got, we got five. We can start with five and then we can always grow from there if you wish.
Fine.
But I was just asking a question. Does that mean, so, so Sean, I understand what you said. Does that mean we're not going to give code books to zoning board members and, and board members in general going forward? Is that a decision? Now, when you get on the board, the code's online?
That would be my recommendation because it's actually easier to use your keyword search than it is to search through the code in a, in a book. So it's, it's.
I'm hoping it'll be a little easier after they update it. I hope it's not, not so much drama as it is now.
Well, like I said, like I said, it's a hundred dollars for five books. If the board wants to consider additional books in the future, you can discuss that later on if you gotta. Right now, like I said, most, Sean is right, most of the board members don't have books. So we, if you come back to Village Hall next to Sharon, you see a pile of books sitting next to her that have been there for, I don't know how many years.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, to consider a motion to accept the proposal from General Code to review, correct, and update the village code and also to purchase uh, five books at a hundred dollars per, per book.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second on a question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next, this is something we do every year. Um, there's unpaid water charges and Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, from April 2020 and October 2020. So now what we do is, um, we take those unpaid charges and add to the village tax bill.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, and then Cindy, thank you. You sent us the list of people with the unpaid water charges today. Thank you for doing that. So, uh, on a motion.
Wait, wait.
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, before we do that, um, there's been an executive order from the governor that has expired. The executive order from the governor was that you cannot re-levy water bills onto tax bills.
And this was just today?
That law, no, that law has expired. He has not signed a new law. So I will recommend that if the board, the board approves this, but subject to state law or executive orders. So uh, until that's renewed, we can move forward with re-leveries of the tax bills. So I wanna make sure that's still hanging over our head.
Well, you know, we only have a few more weeks before the, uh, the village tax bills are.
Correct. If, if, if it's re-leveyed before the law gets in place, that's according to lawyers I spoke to that said that's legitimate. But if the executive order comes in before we add it to the tax bills, we cannot add it to the tax bills. So I just wanna say, if your village board accepts this, um, motion would be subject to any, any legislation for the state or executive order.
Isn't every bit of legislation we passed subject?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
To, to, uh, changes in state law?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're covered here that in case we don't re-levy, the board understands and the public understands why we didn't re-levy it.
Okay. All right, so a motion to, for unpaid water charges to be added to the tax bills, subject to state and executive orders.
Make the motion.
Does that, does that, does that?
That's good.
Okay, so, um, on a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question, just one question.
On a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, the, um, on the bill, is it gonna show two, two lines or is it just gonna be incorporated into one line?
That's a separate, Cindy, that's a separate line. It'll be your taxes and then your water, water re-leve.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect. Okay, so information from officers and departments. So the justice court report, March 2021. Um, we have $386. I like to tell that the amounts, the police report received and filed March 2021. Highway report, March 2021. Waste water treatment plant, March 2021. That's, uh, over 11, 11 million gallons. That's processed at the wastewater plant. Building apartment, department report, March 2021. Wow, a lot of stuff going on. Okay, um, planning board minutes, March 18th, 2021, received and filed. Uh, Stephanie, attorney's report?
All I have is, uh, for executive session. I have nothing for public.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll start with you, Sean.
Good. Mayor's reports first.
I'm, I'm gonna do my mayor's report last, but thank you.
Uh, thanks. I wanted to thank everybody, uh, who watched the, uh, last meeting, who, uh, gave me a lot of positive feedback. I know there was a lot of views on Facebook. Uh, a lot of people have been, uh, watching, watching the, uh, meetings. I also wanna let them know that I know our meetings are very long and, but they're, the minutes are on the website. So you can go on the website and look at the minutes and scan through the minutes to find where you, uh, might wanna view something on a three-hour meeting. Maybe it's in the middle, you go right to one hour or something. So that's something that I do instead of having to watch the whole meeting and looking for a sentence. You could always scan the minutes and they're available on the village website. So there were a lot of comments. I got some emails from, you know, Texas, Florida, North Carolina. Just keep coming back with the positive feedback. I really appreciate it and keep sending the emails. Uh, one thing about the, uh, the meeting minutes, as I was going through some past meetings, uh, the summer of 2020, I know there was a, a meeting on January 23rd, but for some reason on the village website, I was not able to pull up the minutes, the agenda or any supporting documents. And that was the June 23rd, 2020 meeting. Those meeting minutes were approved in the August 11th meeting. The video was available. Uh, I think it was on YouTube or Facebook, so we were able to watch it. And there again, it was, it was a long meeting. So I just was wondering if, if somebody could look into why the June 23rd meeting minutes, uh, are, are not available. It comes up error when you click on it on the website. I don't know if I was.
Oh, okay.
Right, if you just checked it out, you know, just so, so we can look at that.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, another thing, I, I wanted to try and get the, I know Marcus has the intervenor paperwork when the judge, the judge's decision and the decisions on the, uh, the intervenor criteria. But we weren't able to find the original filings that, uh, the village put in, uh, with the Town of Corlin. I know Mayor Marcus had spoken about it and, you know, somebody should have that document available to the village residents, you know, we did, we are gonna be paying for it. So we should at least be able to see what the terms and conditions or the allegations for the intervenor process were. So I'd just like to be able to, be able to look at that. I don't know if you wanna put it on the website or just be able to come in and view like other village documents.
Hey, can I, can I just jump in, Sean? Excuse me. Are you looking for the original petition?
That's correct.
Oh, I can get that for you.
All right, thanks. Cause Marcus didn't have it. He said it wasn't on file within the village. So, uh, if you could just apply it so it's viewable by, through the public.
Sure, I'll get it to all of you.
All right, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Uh, secondly, at the April 6th minute, uh, meeting, uh, the swearing-in, I had made a, a request that the village board send a letter to Senator Harkam, uh, opposing his, uh, Senate bill, Senate Bill S. 4547, which basically allows for multifamily dwellings and single-family units. It basically supersedes our accessory apartment, uh, legislation. It actually takes away municipalities' ability to legislate single-family homes. It makes it as of right to have two families in a single-family home and allows it to be absentee landlord, which is something that would be of a great disadvantage or a great, you know. It was bad, it would be bad for the village. I know the mayor had said she personally told Senator Harkam that she was against it, but I think uh, as with a lot of legislation, we either approve it or disapprove it. We should do it as a joint board. We should have put together a letter or a resolution or something saying, listen, this is not good for our communities and, uh, hopefully other communities within that, within his senate district will also oppose it. So maybe we could, uh, try and fight that legislation. I incorrectly stated that it had already passed committee. It did not pass committee. It is still in committee. It has not been presented to the floor of the senate or the assembly. So it is not too late to oppose that legislation.
And it's not on the governor's.
It's not. Uh, when I, when I read the article, I, I, then I went to the legislative body and tracked the bills and it hasn't met the floor. So it'd be a good time for us to send a letter to him and to the state to say, hey, we oppose this. So I was hopefully, maybe we could discuss it at the next workshop or just have a quick resolution at the next meeting. Also, at the, uh, April 7th, uh, budget hearings, I had requested, uh, for one of the, uh, workshop meetings or villa board meeting. workshop meetings or villa board meeting, that we repeal the sewer rents, uh, law. As you know, we passed that law, but we never collected it, we never associated, put a price tag on it. I've always felt that we just can't ignore legislation, either repeal it or institute it. So I would like to have this brought up at the next workshop meeting so we can discuss either repealing it or collecting it. You know, we just can't leave legislation out there, you know?
Okay, we will, we will have a discussion on that because that, that, that is something I still want to discuss and continue the discussion. So, so then hopefully everyone understands what the intent of that was because some people just shut down and wouldn't listen to it. So let's, Marcus, please put that on the next workshop. Please mark that down, thank you.
Sure, thanks. Uh, the next thing I have, you know, Memorial Day is coming up, uh, there's gonna be two events that the Villas Buchanan, uh, the fire department in conjunction with Villas Buchanan and Montrose and Ver Plank. We have a parade every year, it moves around to different municipalities. This year it's gonna be in the Villas Buchanan. The parade group is gonna be different this year, it's gonna start at, uh, Hammer Cuts at High School and we're gonna march down to the pavilion, which will be our annual Memorial Day parade. So it, it is a little bit different lineup, uh, I'm not so sure why last year's was canceled. Last year was supposed to be in Ver Plank, uh, but due to COVID it was canceled. So this will be the, uh, first Memorial Day parade in, in two years, let's just put it that way. The second event.
Sean, excuse me, Sean, what's the date of that parade?
That is, uh, May 31st at 11:00 AM.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Tri-Villages Parade is always on the day of Memorial Day.
Yeah, sure.
There, there will be a breakfast for marchers, oh, I shouldn't put that out, I don't know if that's true yet or not.
There's no food.
It'll be in a step off, it'll be 11 o'clock.
There's no food at the pavilion or the firehouse this year.
No, okay. So, uh, the step off is 11 o'clock in front of the high school on Route 9, Hammer Cuts at High School. And the parade group will be Route 9 Lindsay Avenue, West Chester Avenue to the pavilion. The second event will be Friday, May 28th at 1:30. Will be the Town of Cortland's Memorial Day event. And that will be held at the Veterans Monument down at Steamboat Dock at the riverfront by the Seaplane Base. Uh, that's gonna be their Memorial Day event. Uh, they usually have it at the Morbeto Center, but, uh, that's, uh, they're not, that's gonna be the rain date. In case it rains, that's where it's gonna be held. So, uh, that's Friday 1:30 at the memorial down at Steamboat Dock in Ver Plank. The other thing I have is that I know I had made a comment on, uh, April 7th meeting. I'm gonna keep making a comment every day that we have a public meeting. It aggravates me to no end that village officials will not stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I find that to be disrespectful, lazy, and goes against everything that this country's about. Village officials should set the example. We take, we swear an oath to our constitution. Although it is not required by the constitution to stand for the flag or for the pledge, we should be setting that example to show that we enjoy our government, we enjoy our way of life, and we should respect the people who can no longer stand for the pledge. So I would, I'm gonna say it every time I see it, and if it continues, I'd hate to have to, I'd hate to have to contact every single veterans organization that I'm involved with, whether it's the Purple Heart, the Legion, the VFW.
Yes, Sean.
Have thirty or forty people come to every meeting and speak for three minutes.
Okay, you, you know what, Sean, there is nobody on this board that's being disrespectful.
When you don't stand for the flag, it's disrespectful.
You're not paying attention to the, to the pledge if you're watching what everybody else is doing. So that's disrespectful. You're supposed to be looking at the flag with your hand on your heart. So if you're watching all of us to see how you can get, gotcha, 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 gotcha.
Listen.
Sean, what are you doing? What are you doing?
I'm gonna tell you that every time.
Grandstanding, Sean, you're grandstanding, that's what you're doing.
I'm, I'm saying that I'm pointing out something that I view as disrespectful to our flag.
Alright.
And every village official should stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's your opinion.
I wouldn't be giving somebody else's, I'm gonna give them the report.
Absolutely, yes you are.
I would appreciate it in the future that village officials stand for the pledge. You know, I know there was a.
I will do what I think is respectful at that particular time. If I stand up, you're gonna see my belly. I put my hand over my heart and you have some hell of a nerve.
I do.
I gave thirty-five years of my life to my country, I respect it, I love it. You have no right to determine what it is mean to be, to respect your country. What the hell do you think you are?
Well, I just, I just think.
No, it doesn't, no, I'm tired of people like you.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
You have no right to determine what people's patriotism is.
I just feel it, not standing for a flag.
Well, that seems to be a fair point. Okay, Sean, let's move on, let's move on. You've made your point, you're grandstanding, please, let's move on. We have to go into executive session, we understand your point, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have, um, Nick Zachary, what do you have for us this evening, Nick?
Alright, a few things, just, uh, first of all, we've had a couple of cases in the last year or so of people using concrete block. This is the, um, those large blocks that are, as Mr. Wheeler recently explained, when people go out with a concrete truck and make deliveries, if they've got any waste left in the truck at the end of the day, when they dump it, they dump it into the, into the forms to make those concrete blocks that are used for, uh, you know, they're used for construction barricades and, and, um, we've had a couple of cases where these concrete blocks have been used as retaining walls or fencing. And I would like to, to propose that the village place a ban on concrete blocks as an acceptable material for fencing and retaining walls. Uh, perhaps there could be a provision where if they are structurally used as a retaining wall, they can be dressed over with a more suitable material. But, uh, there's two residents that, I mean, if I suddenly woke up and my neighbor had put up a fence of, of concrete block, I'd move out of Buchanan. If, unless I can get them to take it down, I'd move out. And we've got two houses that I know of where the people have to look at those hideous things. I'd like to, I'd like us to propose, I'd like to propose that we, uh, amend our code to disallow concrete block as a suitable fencing and wall material, um, on, uh, other than a temporary basis for blocking construction, you know, for, for safety purposes on a temporary basis, but as a permanent wall or fence, can't have it. Um, and if the other board members agree with me, then I, I would like us to develop that, a resolution to amend the code. Um, number two, a quick update on the, uh, contest to redesign the village seal, which you see behind me there. That, um, the, um, uh, we had to discuss the, uh, the award to go to the winner of the contest and apparently we cannot use village funds. Uh, Marcus and Stephanie looked into this and, um, uh, unless the money was specifically donated for that purpose. So, um, assuming that nobody else contributes to this, I will donate $250 and that'll be the, whether it's a gift certificate or we'll figure out how to do it, that would be the prize for this. If anybody else wants to add anything to it, reach out to me. Um, but, um, the contest runs through May. Uh, for anybody that is interested, I had a, just an email in the middle, it's a meeting tonight, somebody asking if they could contribute, if they can submit more than one design. Um, and I know there'll be some designs coming from the art students at the high school. Uh, so we'll see how it goes and how many we get. Um, hopefully, uh, people are, they're, they're, you know, people are passing the word on to their artistic friends and family in the area. Um, and anybody that's hearing about this for the first time, the contest to redesign the village seal, which you see behind me, uh, if you go to the Villas Buchanan website, you'll see a link to a website for this contest with more information. There's a link to a flyer that we put out as well as to the website. So, uh, that, uh, a couple of things have come up for the next workshop in the discussion tonight that we asked to be on the agenda. I believe we will also be discussing at the next workshop, the, um, ideas for the rezoning of the Indian Point property. Uh, we discussed that briefly last time and, uh, I, I'm hoping that that discussion is to be continued at the next workshop. Um, and I had mentioned that I would, that there was already a survey uh, with some interesting answers from the public, that was done as part of the waterfront revitalization plan survey. Um, I will, uh, I think that link, it should, there should be a link to that on the, on, on our website to the local waterfront revitalization plan, but I will check. And if it's not, I will get hold of the, I will, uh, get hold of that portion of the survey and forward it to everybody. Um, and, um, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Um, Trustee Capicotti. Do you have anything for us this evening? Oh, you're on mute, Anthony.
Yeah, I'm here, here I am.
There you go.
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, uh, you know, I'm going in, I'm getting in the flow a little bit here with this, uh, with, with what we're doing here. And I'm glad we got a couple of resolutions resolved tonight.
Yep.
And, uh, I am glad that we also got involved with the baseball with Little League, we did the right thing there. I feel that that was a positive thing that we needed to get done. I was getting, I was getting involved a little bit through friends, because I was involved with Little League for a long time. I'm glad that we, we moved forward and got, got that taken care of. Um, you know, when, when I was, when I, when I was working with the Little League, everybody was a volunteer. I know that there's unions involved and everything, but they were able to maintain the fields and do their, do their maintenance themselves and they, they got it all done and it was great for, for the kids and the, the coaches got to, to take care of the fields. They wanted to, they wanted to take care of it to protect their own kids. So I'm glad that we got that resolved, it's important that we, we try and do back, do good for the community. Uh, another thing, uh, I, I just want to bring up something that, that I want to get out, out because when I was, when I was running for election, um, a friend of mine put up a sign in the Villas Buchanan circle. And the sign was, there was complaints about it. And, you know, it was, I, I don't, I don't know if he was, if there was a code involved or, 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 if there was multiple codes involved, but I got involved a little bit with code enforcement. They gave me a, a code that was designed for a permanent fixture, not a sign of that matter. And they made my friend shut the sign off. And I just, I just hope that that wasn't a political thing that was done because it really, it left a bad taste in my mouth. And, and I don't, I, I, I think if, if we're gonna follow that code and moving forward, then all these codes, all these signs that come in for construction workers or, or anything, we, we should, we should codify it. Make it, make them illegal in the village. Make, you know, I, I, I mean, it seems like that's what was done to my friend and I feel like that's, we should follow suit. And if it, if it was that visibly disturbing going into a stop sign, then we should make sure that they're not in our village at all, even though they are DOT certified.
Okay, well, maybe we need to re-look at the, uh, the sign, the code for the signs.
Yeah.
Something we could do at a workshop.
I, I feel like that was a, uh, I don't know, let's just keep that, keep that out. And another thing is, uh, you know, I'm not really sure like what Nick's doing with this, changing our, 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 our sign in Villas Buchanan, that's our history. You know, I, I like his idea of bringing in the, the children to get involved and it's a great idea and it, for them to come up with it, but necessary, is it necessary? I, I, I think that's part of our history as a village. I like it, I like the way it is and, and, and I, I don't want to change it. I think it's, uh, it's part of who we are and, and there's too many people changing history these days. Uh, and, you know, I'm just picking up things as we go along, I hope you all appreciate my opinion and, and, as we go along, I'll get more involved with the meetings, but I did learn a lot tonight about the overlay, I appreciate all the information, uh, you know, and, and I'll get more involved and, and, uh, you know, thank you, thank you for your, your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Trustee Funtian, what do you have for us tonight?
Oh, well, I was there with, I'm with you on Friday at the Indian Point, the last day. It's, it was a nice event for everybody to thank the employees and, uh, and their unions, which kept them safe the whole time while the plant was open and, uh, and especially then all the work that many of the politicians did and after the thing was hoped to be closed. Uh, as the liaison with the police department, I've kind of taken over big shoes with Cheech. But their report, uh, this, we had Officer Buddy had, had dealt with a, a problem with a very loud party, which happened every now and again. And both Detective Loachter and Officer Reg responded to domestic, uh, arguments. Uh, and it sounds, you know, meek and mild, but these, these things can really get out of hand and, and it's really one of the things that most of the officers, uh, in, in any police department don't, do not like to get into is domestic, uh, fights, uh, of, of any kind because it, it creates an atmosphere where the, where the officer coming on the scene becomes the enemy and both turn down them. Uh, so Officer Tierney also responded to a domestic dispute. Excuse me, I got that mixed up, the Loachter was, was a, I gotta read this one out because this is a, a, you wonder, I'd, I'd love to hear what comments people would have. It says, "On March 11th, 2021, at approximately one, at one o'clock in the morning, Detective Loachter responded to a report of possible criminal mischief at a residence. Detective Loachter spoke to the complainant who advised that their cable stopped working and when they checked the cable line outside, it appeared to be cut. Detective Loachter investigated and was able to determine that no criminal mischief occurred. Source of the problem was located by the cable company and not criminal in nature. I just found it really odd that somebody would call a police officer over, their cable went out at one o'clock in the morning." That's, that's a real killer. Uh, and the Villas Buchanan Police Department participated in the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee and the Department of Motor Vehicles, no empty chair. Uh, this is a campaign, as we all know, we probably went through high school, went to proms and everything else. And to try to, uh, to talk to the teenagers about, yes, unfortunately some go out and drink and then they drive and the consequences can be so overwhelming and, you know, your life is ending when you're getting out of high school. I, I instituted a new thing, I, I sat down with, with the Chief Shane and I had asked him prior to, that I said I would like to sit down with each particular police officer and, and just go back and forth with them. I, I, I told all of them, I worked in law enforcement for 35 years. Uh, I never carried a firearm, but I, I supervise people with it. But I, I'm very, uh, well-read and, and up to date on two of their most important things is their shift work and their overtime, uh, assignments. And these issues, I've seen fights over them, I've seen, uh, everything and anything and the impact on the individual is very, is, is very high and on their family. And then with that taken into account and some of these other issues that they get into, I, I, when I spoke to Shane, that his comment, and I fully go along with it, that we should, uh, have our officers covered by employee assistance program. I think it's very important because, uh, the nature of the job lends itself to really big problems, emotional problems. It's what they see, they would see the worst of society, not here in the village, you know, I mean, overall for, for those people. They're dealing with domestic, domestic issues of people fighting. And what I, what I got to from here is about the, um, the problem with people who have, have, uh, mental issues. Uh, many of them, because we're located here close to, uh, the veterans place, are, are men and women who've come back from wars and who are basically disfigured mentally for probably the rest of their life. Uh, one of the issues that come up with that, and it's, and it's coming up soon, is this July 4th, these people are really badly affected, and I'll say myself because I suffer from post-traumatic stress syndrome from 9/11. And I'll say myself because I suffer from post-traumatic stress syndrome from 9/11. It's the noise of fireworks brings it all back to them. So I implore the people in the village, go to the local places. Peekskill has fireworks. Go to Mid County, they have fireworks. But setting off all these fireworks is driving these people crazy. It brings them back to wars, and I could go on and that. But I please take that into account. It's fun for some people, but those people should realize it's a horror for many others. So I had a great time talking with them, and they were very, you know, giving of themselves. And I hope I gave to them, and I hope I can establish a trust with them. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Rich. We did, I know one of the recommendations of the Police Reform Committee was the EAP. And at one time, we did look into, Westchester County does have the EAP Assistance Program. But I believe, from what I remember, when we looked into it, it's like you have to have it in by the end of the year. But I'm sure there's other EAPs that we could look into also. I do want to comment on long meetings. There's a lot going on. This is not like years ago where there was only a few things on the agenda and nothing got done. As you see, we have a lot of things on the agenda. We're doing a lot of things for the village. This is how we get things done by having, unfortunately, a lot of things on the agenda. Sometimes also things that are coming up that we have to address, you know, like the water leak, and I could go on and on and on. So this is not like years ago. The meetings are going to be long. There's a lot of work to be done here. And we're not going to get it done if we just have a few things, items on the agenda. So I'm not going to apologize for that because we have a lot, lot to do. The Beautification Committee, the plant sale, I'd just like to mention that. Please come out and support them. That's this Saturday and Sunday, May 7th and 8th at the Circle from 10:00 to 1:00. They do a lot of good work here in the village. They always have the Circle and other areas looking great. We have a letter from Mike Lepore. This is to inform you that effective June 1st, 2021, I will no longer be your Senior Director Consultant. Lucy and I have decided to move out of the state and relocate to be near our children and grandchildren. My run as your consultant has not been very long, but I have sincerely enjoyed working for and with each and every one of you. I expect to be here until late July or very early August. So I'm happy to work with any person who assumes this position for as long as I'm here. Godspeed and God bless all of you. And from Mike Lepore, thank you, Mike, for your service to the village. And we will, we will get him recognition at the next meeting. There is also a letter from Elaine Gutches that I'd like to read. Elaine has been a resident of the village for many years. This was to me and to the chief. "I want to make you aware of exceptionally compassionate services rendered to me by two of your officers. Officer Reg and Sergeant Pomete responded separately on two different occasions, March 4th and April 3rd, when I needed ambulance transport to the hospital. They offered me any assistance and made me feel comfortable while we waited for the ambulance. It's so gratifying to live in a community where the police department offers such great assistance. I've asked that you place copies of this letter in the officer's personnel file. With sincere thanks, Elaine Gutches." So thank you, Elaine. And I'm glad, I'm glad you were able to be helped and you're okay. And I would like to comment about the legislation Sean spoke about. Yeah, it was not on the governor's desk. I have talked to Senator Harkam. I do have a meeting set up this Friday with Supervisor Paglisi and Senator Harkam to discuss it. The WMOA, the Westchester Municipal Officials Association, is not for it and have spoke clearly about that. So as soon as I speak to Senator Harkam, I already told him there will be a letter that goes out to reinforce where we stand on that issue. No, it is not a benefit to the village. I think most communities are against it. It supersedes the home rule law. So I don't think that's going anywhere, but he will definitely understand where we're coming from with that. That's, that's not, it's not happening. We can help it. What else? So, yes, so we have a few things to go on to the next agenda. And the ceremony on Friday, it was not only to thank the employees for their dedication and their safe operation of the plant. It was an end of an era for the Village of Buchanan. We have been the host community since 1962 of the Indian Point Energy Center. And it was appropriate that day to end the era that we had a long run. We had three nuclear power plants, and it was a sad day for our community. But it was, you know, we kind of had to, to thank the employees. And also, it was of historical significance what happened. So there was a good turnout. There were a lot of good speakers. There were representatives from the community. There were also representatives from the unions. And it turned out very nice, and I think everyone really appreciated it. I, let's see, we have to go because we're 10 to 11. Busy, busy, busy. So now, I believe I'm going to open it up to comments from the floor.
Teresa, may I provide a quick little update on some items?
Oh, sure, absolutely. I'm sorry, Marcus, I did skip over you. I apologize.
No problem. I'm just waiting. Just a couple of quick things to update the village board and also get some direction. Based on the last meeting, we discussed the little, this property issue between the city of Peekskill and the village we're calling Lynch Cove. So I did get some pricing for a surveyor and a title search. It's about $7,000 to do both, to get both done. The surveyor that I talked to is a licensed surveyor, also a professor in surveying. He's a licensed engineer and an attorney. So he brings a lot of things to the table. So I can have, we can have that discussion at the workshop to see if the village board wants to go and continue in that direction. That's one item. The other items, we talked briefly about the pavilion. I reached out to the sponsor, which was Harkam, his office. They say that grant is still in the bans. They don't know when it's going to be released or what's going to happen with that, that grant. That building does need work to be done. So hopefully, we either get that money released or we're going to have to consider doing that work ourselves. So just wanted to let you know that it has been canceled, but it's still being held back for some time. The other item is ConEdison. If you noticed, they've been working, they've finished working on Broadway. They're finishing Blakely Avenue with their gas line. They're actually moving now towards Greentown Road. We are gonna talk to the ConEdison about releasing funds to the village to that, where we can include in our paving program. We're going to be walking that area to see what's going to be covered with that. So I want you to know that we are working with that. And we're going to be working with ConEdison to see how we're going to get that area repaired. So working with George's office on that as well. Also, general code, we talked about, we approve us moving forward, we redo it in code. They have another application that the board is willing to consider that I want to send to you guys, which is ties in, is a GIS. The GIS map we have, we can actually tie into zoning map with that as well. So you can pick on any parcel, and it'll bring up the zoning for that area. So the general public and the village board or the planning board or zoning board can pick on the property. And all the requirements of the zoning will pop up right on the screen as well. I can get the board to propose one. There are some links. If you want to discuss that at a future workshop as well. It's a nice feature. The municipality is going that direction as well. And I think it will answer a lot of questions from the general public to know what they can and cannot do with their property. So it's a nice little digital feature if we want to discuss that at a future workshop. Wanted to bring that up. And then the seniors, as we discussed, they're going to be starting on May 12th. Will be their first meeting with the seniors. We looked at the room. We still have to do social distancing. There are going to be temperature checks. They are going to show proof of vaccinations to protect them and everybody else in the room. They will not be, we will not be providing food. But if they want to bring their own little snacks, they can do that. So the first meeting will be May 12th at 1:00. So I just wanted to let the board know about that as well. So if anybody wants to stop by and say hello, you're more than welcome to attend that meeting as well. So I just want to provide those quick little updates to the board members. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marcus.
Marcus, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Yeah, the boundary issue with Peekskill. Have you spoken to Peekskill about it?
No, not yet because I think at the last meeting was before we did that. Because I did talk to the town, the city assessor. And he agrees with the mapping, the way it is, and the property taxes that we pay. So according to his records, that is one in the city of Peekskill. So that's from at least the city assessor. I have not talked to any city official unless I get direction from the village board to do so or when any of the village board members want to meet with the city council.
So you feel we need to get our ducks in a row with a survey and this and that and a title search before we approach them?
Yes, for twofold. One is to confirm the information, number one. And number two, if the village board wants to talk to the city council about annexing that property into the village, you will need that survey and title search anywhere to run through that process. Now, of course, the city will have to agree to that. But as far as I understand from the village point of view, from the history, we've always used that property as it was village property. And we never go into the city for any approvals.
Yeah.
So I don't see that why they would object to it. But let's confirm that information first before we talk to the city.
Right. Well, Peekskill was paying us a fee to use the boat launch at one point, weren't they?
That's, yeah, that's my understanding.
It's pretty silly for them to pay for a fee for a boat launch that was in their village.
The difference is that the village does own the property. So the village owns the property. So they need permission from the owner of the property to use their property. The difference is, yeah, so the difference is only the zoning and the use of the property will have to go back to the city for approval.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I'm not terribly knowledgeable about the best way to go about something like this. I just thought in my mind, but it just seemed so absurd that it could perhaps just be something we talked to them about and agree to write up the whatever paperwork is needed to rectify it. But I guess we have to go through more of a process than that.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, we have to, you know, then record the deed and the property with the record. So it makes sense to have a survey done so we can agree on the meets and bounds of the property.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Here we thought it was, yeah, in Buchanan. All right, well, what's the board's pleasure with this? Do they want to go through and do the survey and do the title search? $7,000, you said, Marcus?
Correct. And like I said, I would highly recommend the surveyor that we talked about because she has, maybe needs to testify in court. None of his survey has ever been overruled. There's been a lot of legal, he's a lawyer too. So it helps us to defend our case to the village, I mean, to the city, sorry.
All right, so we'll discuss it again.
Yeah, we'll discuss it at the next workshop, correct.
You know, if we're, you know, if the board approves, then we'll approve it in June.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Comments from the floor? Do we have anybody still with us?
Yes, Eileen just raised her hand again. Hold on, then bring it up. There you go, Eileen, you're up.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. One, I want to thank Bob Wheeler for his dog's appearance in the screen. It was nice to see his pooch. It broke up the meeting. Seniors, back when you were talking to Nancy with the pool not allowing anybody in, at one point, seniors used to go up to the pool, let's say 11:00, 12:00 for exercise aquatics.
Right.
Is that going to be offered or not? If there's even anybody interested? There were about six, seven people at one point that used to go up here and do water aerobics.
You know, that's right. I completely forgot about that, Eileen. We're going to have to ask Nancy because it was, was it before camp, before they went in? But we'll check with Nancy on that. You're right.
Well, sometimes I think, Teresa, those kids have gone into the pool at 8:00, 9:00 in the morning, and they've been freezing. So I don't know if they would come out for like lunchtime, and that's when the seniors went in. I'm not sure, but.
Check on that.
I just wondered, I don't even know if anybody's interested from the seniors, but there are younger ones in there now. So they might be.
Okay, no, good. Thank you.
And since they're now going to start meeting at second floor, did anybody check for brighter light bulbs in the hallways? So in the event, just a safety check. That's it.
All right.
Yeah, we are looking into that, Eileen. Thank you so much.
Okay, just a reminder because at workshop you said those meetings were going to start. So if anybody's going to use the hallway, you've got to light it, you know, the stairwell.
And I think our meetings, I think our meetings will be starting up soon also.
Okay. Aw, geez, this is so easy. All right, good night, everybody.
All right, good night. Thanks, guys. Anyone else have a comment from the floor here?
No other hands are raised.
And Cindy, there is no one, no one that's called in either?
No one has called in.
Okay, so Eileen's out, okay. So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters and contract negotiations.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
All right, give me a couple of minutes to have everybody log off.